Welcome to tonight's pre-meeting of July eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Anybody have questions on the agenda tonight? Jim?
I had some. I think that since I was able to catch some of the questions in my email a little bit earlier, I appreciate the answers and clarification on the item eight E, which is the contract for all of the bid items. So that was clarified for me. And I definitely had just questions in relation to the who's item. But I'm just still kind of going through the email here. So I think I might, if needed, I might bring them up in the session. But I'm just trying to get a little company. I don't want to take up too much time on that. So I appreciate it.
Follow-up, I did have questions on the facilities budget and maybe, I didn't see the email that you got, but it looked like that was concerning twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Is that normally how we do this? Is it every few years? Or I did see some details about what it includes, but is this normally how we do it? In a bundle of every couple of years or how do we manage this? Or is it simply because the cost got to a certain amount and it had to come to council? I just wanted more info on how that's done.
Public Works Director.
Just a facilities question or a?
It's the, just budgeting question on why three years? My experience is, is that, you know, if you, if it's routine and you can lock in three years, it's good to lock in three years. But I don't know what our history is and I'm not sure you do either.
From the purchase orders and things that I've been signing, this is common type of approach.
Okay. And so I just, more information for us. Is this such a blanket approval for expenses for the next three years for your department?
For twenty-four, it authorizes, I think it was up to a million dollars for this year. And then subsequent years will be subject to budget approvals. So it just places a cap on what that spending authority might be, but it's still subject to council approval of the budget.
If I may add there, Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer, is that you saw that the staff undertook a competitive process, requesting bids and competitive quotes and so forth. And what the city benefits from in doing that is securing prices for multiple years, sometimes three years, sometimes five years. However, what it really amounts to is each year the contract, you know, would be renewed for a subsequent period. But this guarantee locks in those prices for the proposers' contract that's on the table for tonight.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Okay. So we're approving it for this year. Next year it'll come back. We're just locking in the contract amount so that it doesn't go up. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Yeah. So I just wanted to clarify on the dog park boat that we're taking tonight. What exactly is that we're voting on? So we're voting on four hundred and forty acres for off-leash. And we're voting saying that yes, a management plan can be created, correct?
Yes. And then the special language in this ordinance identifies this as, it's not pure open space. It's not parkland. It's a special case, just like Stanley Lake, where there are certain rules specific to this area as a natural area. But it's a subset of open space. And, you know, as I shared with the mayor earlier, I think it's a rather ingenious solution to, you know, it's hard to maintain it as open space. It's costly to maintain it at park. And we found a solution that lies in between. Mr. Herrera-Michler, you want to answer anything further or provide additional details?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what we are voting on. Because it looked like there was examples of what you might put in the management plan. But we were voting to give you permission to put together a management plan, not what specifically you bullet pointed as things you might want to put in the management plan, correct?
I would say Tomas Herrera-Michler, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. And really, the core of what we're asking you to look at and approve tonight is the changes to the municipal code that allow this new use to be in place. That combines both the use as an off-leash dog park and a natural area. So, but yes, we definitely will be wanting to create this area-specific master plan that spells out things like where are the trails going to go and where, where's the best place for fencing? And really kind of prioritize the investment out there. And of course, we'll be bringing that back to council.
So when you bring that back to council, the master plan, who has the overall say on that? Is, would that be us council or would that be the city manager that gives the final approval?
Well, I believe it's, really, it's a management plan. So it's really the city manager would generally have the approval authority for that. But I'm sure that we'll be bringing back the plan to council for your review, your direction. That's the way it works, I guess. Sorry.
It makes me uncomfortable. I would like council to be able to see it and I would like council to be able to approve it. I, I'm not sure if this ordinance, the way it's drafted, is exactly what we intended. So if we vote yes on this tonight, we are not voting on whether you use a firm to create the master plan, correct?
No, we would go through the normal bidding procurement practice.
Okay, okay. And what I would really, really like to see is a board put together. Like we have a human services board. We have an inclusivity board. We have a lot of different boards. And I would really like to see one specifically for the Westminster Hills open space to help with the master plan or strategic planning yearly. I, I think that board could also be in charge of volunteer pickup days. I just think this would be a really good opportunity to have another board. So if there are things in here that, so let's say I agree with most of what's in here and I vote yes, can we then ask for amendments to this to vote on in our next meeting? And that might be a question for you to tweak it?
Yeah, I was just gonna.
Attorney question.
Set off to the city attorney.
So like if we want it to say the final approval is city council? Because it feels like we gave a direction on June third that we want to maintain the dog park. And it feels like there's been some pushback from staff. And I come from a staff background and I didn't always agree a hundred percent with the senators' bills. But that wasn't my job, like to disagree or agree. My job was to support them in what they were trying to carry out. And it feels like there's been a lot of pushback and I guess that's why that makes me uncomfortable. So I'm wondering if we were to vote on where, how it is tonight, if there's any areas that we want to vote on to make different, can we ask for an amendment tonight to then be voted on in two weeks?
So, thank you, Councilor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. So the ordinance that's on tonight's agenda for council's consideration would establish a designation for the Westminster Hills open space dog off-leash and natural area. So that designation, I think, would establish the ability to have dogs off-leash in specified areas of that open space and to codify that so that the current situation would, would be addressed, which is that the current code language may not be consistent with the uses that are occurring in the dog leash, dog off-leash area. So I think this code language is intended to, to address that and ensure that the off-leash dog use is something that is specifically identified as an allowable use in this area. I don't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, if a management plan is even referenced within the code change here. So it's really just defining this area as an area in which off-leash dog usage is recognized as allowed and also recognizing that the Walnut Creek, that there are certain other areas out, I think on the thousand acres that are surrounding this, that those areas would be distinguished from the off-leash areas. So the idea of adopting a management plan or even subsequent budget discussions about what budget is appropriate for managing this land are not part of tonight's question really for city council. The, the language that's proposed before you is really intended to ensure that the off-leash dog use is something that the code allows.
Right. And so some of the other things I referenced was from the, you know, more information or the background document. And that talked a lot about a potential management plan. So in, but in the actual ordinance, there is language, correct, saying that the final decision is the city, comes to the city manager. Is that correct?
No, no. I, I think that tonight's ordinance really just establishes this designation for the land and it doesn't address the management plan or whose authority the management plan would be undertaken through. So that's, that's a question maybe for another night. But I think the question for tonight is, is whether this land should be designated as an area for off-leash dog use.
Okay. Right. That's why I wanted to be clear on what we were voting for because the background information, I was, it didn't seem completely clear. So I just wanted to clarify, to make sure I knew what I was voting for and then also for the people who are listening so they also understand what we're voting for. So the other things that, those would get brought up at another time. And this has nothing to do with the ordinance that we're voting on tonight.
That is correct. We'll be coming back to council as a normal course of action to get your direction as, as we proceed through these different processes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
Counselor Demont was first.
I was gonna kind of hit on the same thing, just as far as like steps forward. And I probably will mention this out there when we vote on it. But my hope would be that we're brought along through this process, especially considering how much focus the, the city has on this. It makes sense for the elected body to be brought along as you develop that plan and make sure that we're all understanding where we're going with it.
Counselor Ireland?
So my, I had the same concern as Counselor Hot. I thought it was not clear as to what we were voting on tonight. There was a lot in there, like hiring eight more employees, which is shocking. The guardians of the dog park have a four-year plan for this place. They want to keep it a dog park. So they have very big incentive to do so. So we need to use them instead of thinking we have to hire eight more people and get all these more vehicles. It's very concerning to me. Also, the transparency in the twenty-five acres, weren't they the thirty acres that was going to be used for off-leash dog park? And now they can't be used for off-leash dog park. That was the original plan, right?
Correct.
Then what was the transparency there?
So in total transparency, as we were doing our background and in-depth investigation into the purchase of each one of these properties and understanding what, if any, constraints there might be, we found that the Sisters property, which is the twenty-five point five acres in the southwest corner of the dog park area, has a conservation easement on it that is held by Jefferson County. And that easement doesn't allow activities like off-leash dog use. We can ask Jefferson County to release us from that. And that was my intent, was to ask and see if they would allow it. But because we couldn't get that in place in time for tonight, we thought it was much safer to give you the actual acreage that we're sure can be used for this purpose if city council passes the, the changes that we're proposing tonight.
So what was the original plan, that we were going to only allow those thirty acres for off-leash? And now they can't be used at all? That was the original plan?
Yeah.
Barbara, OP Deputy City Manager, point of clarification. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. The thirty-three acres that you're referencing was in the upper northeast corner. It's not the parcel that we're talking about. That's the Sisters parcel. So.
I just want to make sure that we are doing our homework before we're putting this out to the public all the time. It's not okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
No, it's good to be back.
Glad you were safe and sound.
Reports. Counselor Ireland?
I was gonna go to the Ward's Board Meeting, but I guess it was canceled. I hope the facilitator's okay. Does anyone have an update on her?
She's doing better.
She'll be here on tomorrow?
She'll be here tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I actually had an agenda question. I'm sorry. I thought we had a little bit more time. Specifically on eight B and I'm just curious, I'm trying to remember on the collective bargaining. In the past, we had collaborated more, I guess, with management to kind of know where it was. So I didn't realize that we were already at the place where we'd be voting. It looks like it's all good, but I'm just curious, is that a change? Or did I miss a meeting or am I just not remembering correctly in my, my summer break and vacation?
Counselor, we're following the same system that we used last year with the police collective bargaining agreement. So, you know, I'm not sure what happened before, but last year we sat down and the attorney kind of talked through the, the rules of the collective bargaining, things like that in executive session. We did that this year. We went and had our exchange of proposals and idea. We, you know, worked through those, came up with a tentative agreement, notified the council that we had a tentative agreement that we'd have to go to the membership for ratification. That ratification in this case was approved. Bring that back to the council for approval. You know, again, we have a collective bargaining agreement that has been, you know, agreed to by management, ratified by the union, you know, we're at a, an approval. But this is the same process we used last year.
So, and I appreciate that, that reminder. I do recall last year kind of having the same feeling though. And I guess my concern is, when I look at this, it's fine this year. I guess my big concern is in, in the future, say if council ended up not agreeing with what management and the unit agreed on, we could end up in a strange impasse. So I think that some of the, the past practices prior to you and the ones I went through, we had executive sessions where we just kind of were brought in saying, here's what, you know, the bargaining unit asked for, here's what, you know, what we asked for. And so at least there was no surprises to council. So we kind of had a feeling for what we would vote on. So again, I'm glad that we went through another process where things like this were pretty seamless. Management and the units have been able to come to an agreement. I just, thinking back, I think that that was useful because in the unlikely event that, you know, something came up, especially since it's something we'll have to ratify, I just don't want to get into a situation in the future where, you know, council may not agree with something, whether it's just council or a different one. And I think that, you know, these are still, in my mind, fairly new things for the city of Westminster. This is the oldest bargaining unit, but still this is what, under a decade of, of these kind of agreements. So just something I wanted to bring up because I want to make sure that we continue to look at ways that we can improve and not, I guess, be caught blind by any of the three people who need to come to an agreement.
Counselor, your turn.
I was a little slow with outside committees last week. So I just enjoyed being able to get to see everybody at the July fourth event and just as usual, amazing and firefighter, got to show off their skills apparently. So exciting. I had, I, I ended up going to Broome Fields and I will say, I just, I watched, I watched Westminster from afar. It looked, I, I know, I have to support our, our team. But I think it was, it looked more entertaining over the Westminster grass. But yeah, I, I just really appreciate all of the staff that puts that together because it's amazing. And having now, and I've gone to a couple of others in the, in the region, I definitely see that we have an amazing event that we put together. It's super family oriented. It's very, I, I love how everything's sort of in one place and you can, yeah. It was, it was something that I'll, I definitely missed attending and I will make sure I go for the full event next year.
Counselor Demont?
Likewise, it was a great event on Saturday. For the parts of it, I was there. So thank you, or not Thursday, Thursday, staff for your, your work at the Fourth of July. I heard a lot of good feedback, so.
I went to the Adams County Fireworks and Concert, which was very good. They had a very good country singer over there. And then I stayed for all of ours too. So I, my husband loves fireworks. He's, so he wouldn't leave before the fireworks. Even though he couldn't walk. Thank you for everyone that carted him up and down the hill.
Counselor Carmelia?
Similar. I just want to say a big thank you to all our staff who work so hard. You know, I stopped by the Splash and Bash earlier that day just to say hi to all the city folks working that day. And they were doing such an amazing job out there, you know, keeping our residents and the families in the city happy. And that was a great time. And then the Westminster fireworks display was, you know, beautiful. And so I just thank you for everyone that keeps the city running. And we have such a successful events here, event planning and everyone who manages it. Oh, also a big thank you to our police chief who found me roaming around at the Westy fireworks and decided to give me a golf cart ride. So thank you. But yeah, big thank you to everybody. It was well done.
Yeah, just to reiterate what the other counselors said, I thought Thursday was great. I thought our staff was doing a phenomenal job. Firefighters did a phenomenal job putting out the fire. So yeah, just, I thought it was great. Yeah.
Counselor Isadore?
I have a request, City Manager. I, I love these. Is there, so the first question is, what, what level of detail are we allowed to know about the performance of the businesses in downtown? So revenue, traffic, walk, foot traffic, that kind of, I know they're private businesses. Right? But how, is there a way that we can gauge health, financial health of the businesses downtown so that we can get proactive on?
I'll ask Ms. Trawler to come up and answer that if you might have any perspective on what might be allowed to track downtown business, data points, success, et cetera. I mean, to your point, they're private businesses and so, you know, they don't have to provide anything unless, you know, they feel that they want to provide that. But could you answer the question?
Sure, I could take a stab. Stephanie Trawler, Economic Development Manager. There is a newly formed business association. I think that's a great voice that we could tap into to see how they're doing. Short of that, we do have access to the sales tax records, but they would have to sign a disclosure for us to look at that and review that. So there's consistent outreach. There's consistent marketing and this group is really starting to form. And I think they'll, that'll be the best way to really communicate with that group.
Okay. Related to the units, thank you. Related to the units for the properties there, can we add vacancy rates on this, on, on future ones of these?
I'm sure we could. I guess the question would be, it's a snapshot in time. And, you know, you've got four apartment buildings down there that are, you know, gaining and losing people, you know, every single day.
Yeah, maybe you can give a range, you know, so a longer range to stabilize the trending.
I think my, my take on, just in my conversations of my apartment building is they run, you know, ninety to ninety-five percent occupancy. And so there's just about a five percent turnover.
Okay, thanks.
Sparkler Tournament. Is Tomo still here? Wow. That, that amazes me every year. They, and they went through Sunday. Yesterday was the championships. The crew that you have, those folks did not see Fourth of July. Those folks have seen nothing for, I don't know how many days, fifteen, I think I was told. People love it. Crowds are wonderful, great time. Those young women do a fantastic job and I was just happy to get the ball over the plate. And then we have, that started yesterday while the championship game was going to start at two. We have Boomerang at the park where we have normally soccer. And tomorrow and Friday, they won't be there. That's their time off. But the rest of the week through the fifteenth, stop by. Don't go where the yellow tape is. Don't go in there because you will get hit with the Boomerang. They're going about eighty miles an hour. But close your eyes and just listen because you're going to hear the as they're going. And they're going eighty miles an hour. People are catching them with their hands. They are lighter than this piece of paper. They make their own, fascinating. Just go. We have champions across the world here. And as I introduced each of the countries that were here, it was just fun. They also, some of them bring their youth. They have a team of six youth that go to their events. But then this, the world championship is every two years and so they can see what happens. It, it's just, it's amazing. two years and so they can see what happens. It it's just, it's amazing. My husband, as we're walking in for me to give a welcome, he's watching all these boomerangs. And he said, the chief isn't here, but he said, your police department needs to be here because they could use this as one of their weapons. So, also, I want to remind everybody, National Night Out is coming August 6th. That is the first Tuesday of August. Usually they run between five and nine. They can be everything from you as a citizen, just wanting to get your neighbors on the block together. You don't have to do anything special. You can have cookies and lemonade. You can do a potluck. You can do anything you want. Some get very elaborate. Some of the the apartment buildings do, they provide the burgers. Other people bring some of the things to munch on. It it's just a great night. And they try to send the police officers and firefighters that are from your area so that you can talk and tell them what eyes you see during the day or the night so that they know what to look for so they can better patrol. It is just a great night where there's no emergencies. Everybody's able to talk very freely, whether you have it in your home, in the backyard, churches, I know, are some having it. Where wherever you are, just tell them what you see and hear because that's the only way they can help us better patrol the city. Sergeant Cox is the one that you will want to schedule with. And you want to get on the schedule because that's the only way that the police and fire will know you're having an event and that they can show up. So, it's a great night. It's a great neighborhood night. It's always good to know what your neighbors are doing so that if you see a car parked loading up something and you know, hmm, that doesn't look right, call the police and say, something's happening. So, I just encourage everybody to have a National Night Out party, whether it's at your your local park in your neighborhood or just on your street. They don't care. They'll come to where you are. So, but Parks and Rec, your, Stephanie got me every place I needed to be. She would text me. I can't say enough about the folks that made this city very proud. And thanks for the the boulevards that got cleaned up. They look very nice. It's seven. Let's go start a meeting.
Welcome to the July 8th, 2024 council meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City of Westminster City Council Meeting for July 8th, 2024. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect and while our meetings are in session, as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind attendees, there's an expectation that this meeting shall not be disrupted and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided. Not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Present.
Counselor Demat?
Present.
Counselor Azadi?
Here.
Counselor Ha?
Present.
Mayor McNally?
Here.
Mayor Protem Narmela? And Counselor Ireland?
Here.
That brings us to consideration of minutes of June 24th. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the June 24th, 2024 meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of June 24th, 2024. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with city council. Each participant will be given no more than three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back and forth discussion. This evening, the city clerk informed me that we received sixteen emails and four voicemails by the deadline, which have been transcribed and posted on the online agenda packet and forwarded directly to city council. And the city clerk has told me, we have twenty-five speakers, that's the reason, for three minutes. When your three minutes are up, I will thank you for your comments and the clock, that the clock has expired and we appreciate you speaking tonight. Would you please call the first person? The first person is Robbie Baker. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the, being able to speak to the mayor and the council. I'm an avid bike rider. Got nothing against dogs. I'm in the open space quite a bit. I just wanted to bring up, I'm about my fifth time of getting bitten by dogs up there that haven't been controlled by their their owner. Ninety percent of them are probably really good. On the ones that I've been bitten by, I usually am on the far side of the trail. People coming towards me, we all acknowledge each other. One dog last Friday came by, turned and turned and went after me, almost biting my calf. And I was a little upset. And the dog walker told me, he says, I don't know what you're doing in here. This is a dog park. Mountain bikes aren't allowed. And of course, we talked a little bit about that. I guess my gist is, there needs to be a lot of education posted up there, if people will read it, about who's allowed to do what's what. And my biggest concern is, is as a hiker, biker, runner, if a dog bites you and the owner says, oh, gee, I'm sorry, and you're sitting there with blood coming out of your calf, what's the recourse? How do you know even who it is? And in some instance, you may not be able to do walk or whatever if you're way out there. And that person just says, well, I'm sorry. My dog usually does invite people. That, I see that as, doesn't, probably never going to happen, but it's happened close enough to me. I'm scared of it. My wife won't even ride up there anymore. And I like it. It's just, it's closed. Once they get things worked out with the overpass and the underpass, you're going to see a lot more cyclists coming through that open space than there is now. And so, between everybody, signage is critical. Over on the west side of the park, on the street there, there's an area that you can park probably six cars in right there. And people park there all the time. It's, it's an open, it's just west, you know, open space. There's a little, you know, dog memorial there. That's a crazy place to not have no parking signs because people are flying down that road. And if if you don't pay attention and pull out, you're going to cause a bigger accident than you'd have on a hundredth or any of the other ones. That needs to be closed. And it's not. There were some issues as far as, you know, is this, is the city of Boulder and county of Boulder backing out of the Greenway project? I talked to some folks up there. They said, no, they're all in. You know, they're not, there's no pending lawsuits against them or anything like that, from what I was told. So, I mean, it's all education, the way I look at it. And you can't over educate people, that's for sure. Because most of these people won't even read the signs that are right there when they get out of their car. They get out of the car, they either leash up their dog or let their dog go, and they got one mission. Get the heck out there and get going.
Thank you. Your time's up. The next speaker is Carol Gossenheimer. Welcome.
Thank you. Throughout the entire WHOSE process, council has shown little to no concern for Westminster residents at large. You've dismissed the research, countless of countless experts. You've ignored nonprofit organizations and sister municipalities on this subject. You've eagerly aligned yourselves with a very small vocal interest group. You've pretended the high emotion and sympathetic stories from dog owners justifies acting against the best interests of the land and the majority of this city's residents. Last week, you were presented with statistically valid data in the PRL survey. This data shows that ninety percent of Westminster residents value open space for its protection and preservation of land and wildlife, while less than eighteen percent of residents use dog parks across the city. Consider that for a moment. How can you possibly justify rezoning this space when ninety percent of residents want to preserve open space? This is why you've been elected, to sort through the noise, work towards the best interests of the broader community. Your job including, includes looking ten, twenty, even thirty years down the road to ensure success for the future of our city. In nineteen eighty-eight, the city's leaders did that by purchasing the land for preservation. They wisely anticipated its future importance for everyone in the city. Indeed, this particular space is important to dog owners. We all know that. But this particular space is also important to residents who want to walk their dogs on leash without confrontation. It's important to families with small kids, owners of reactive dogs, and physically fragile residents. And we just heard from a biker. Bikers like it, too. It's important to all residents who want to walk in that beautiful open space without being confronted by off-leash dogs. It's important to native wildlife, the overall ecosystem, and our well-being as an entire community. Why are you allowing the voice of one small group to drown out the interests of everyone else? At every single city council meeting recently, off-dee, lost, excuse me, off-leash dog owners talk about how Westminster Hills has profoundly impacted them. We understand that. But why are they the only ones deserving of that impactful experience to the exclusion of everyone else? The proposal presented tonight does nothing to protect the land or its animals. It is not inclusive for all users, and importantly, it is fiscally irresponsible. It simply allows the city to absolve itself from any responsibility to the land. Before last week's PRL survey was shared, you might have been able to say you didn't know what residents want. You might have been able to pretend off-leash dog owners were the majority, but now you know the truth and you have a responsibility to do better.
Thank you. Your time's up. The next speaker is Dale Pugh. Welcome.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Dale Pugh. I am a former district attorney, former city attorney, and chief Soviet counterintelligence analyst for the FBI during the nineteen eighties. I mention that only because I have experience with combating what the KGB refer to as active measures and which we now refer to as disinformation campaign. My wife is Dr. Deborah Austin, a PhD educator, trained educator, and a nationally known legal scholar. We have lived in Westminster for eight years and visit the dog park four times a week with our two golden doodles. We prepared a memo, which was being handed out now for the council, which, which, in order to encourage you to read at least some of it, we've bolded some of the words and phrases to give the idea without having to read the whole thing. The purpose of this memo is to provide you with an analysis of the staff's proposal about which you will vote tonight and encourage you to vote no. This entire endeavor, in my opinion, is a corrupt enterprise and fraud upon the citizens and taxpayers of Westminster for the singular goal of getting rid of the dogs in favor of the cyclists. The staff have proposed the proverbial solution to a problem that does not exist. They have attempted to create a problem for which their solution will address at the potential cost of millions of taxpayer dollars in order to get rid of the dogs in favor of the cyclists. Quae bono? Who benefits? Not the taxpayers, not the overwhelming number of people who utilize the park because of its off-leash status, not the city, which will lose revenue, not Westminster, which will lose its reputation as a great place to live, featuring the most wonderful dog park in Colorado. The only ones who benefit are cyclists. Cyclists who come to the park only in recent years after dog owners have been utilizing it since 2001. Why are cyclists more important than dog owners? Why can't cyclists and dog owners share the property? Let there be no mistake, the entire issue was created by the staff out of the clear blue sky to eliminate dogs in favor of cyclists. When their efforts were challenged, staff misinformed, misled, manipulated, daddled, and outright lied to the council and to the public about every aspect of their made-up problem to justify their unnecessary, ill-conceived, unpopular, and hugely expensive solution. Please do not reward the staff misconduct with a vote to accept this corrupt enterprise. Do not give the city manager the ability to get rid of the dogs on his own volition. Do not be fooled by the staff interpretation of the Sisters of the Covenant easement for which there has never been a complaint.
Thank you.
Do not conflate rezoning with reclassification.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thanks.
Vote no.
The next speaker is Mayor Lee Tagrosa. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Mireli Tagrosa. We love the off-leash dog park. A resident speaking for a few opposing the off-leash space, making the public believe she represents the vast majority of the residents, is just not true. When the petition for this issue shows eighteen to one in favor of people wanting to keep this dog park, just because we talk about our good experiences benefiting our mental and physical health, having our dogs free is not romanticizing the issue. And doesn't mean that we do not care about the environment. We do care. And we demand transparency. The opposition coming up with different ideas every time when we know that reports showing no actual damage to the prairie by the dogs were later misrepresented and altered, making me believe there is something here going on and that the off-leash park is just standing in their way for future plans. Tomas Herrera said in an interview to Telemundo a few days ago that they will have more trails. How that come? They want to conserve the prairie, but they're planning on making more trails is very contradictory. And the claims to save the land, then where they go. Please vote no. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Bruce Baker. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about the water plant. There are some, there are some decisions you can change your mind on. You have a very popular one right now. The water plant, once you borrow the money, you cannot change your mind on. You will be putting a burden on the ratepayers of this city for decades to come. I have to echo what a previous speaker said. I don't think the staff has done this council a service in giving you the information. Have you been told of the alternatives to the plant? Thornton built a brand-new water plant, 20 million gallons a day, in 2020 for $90 million. You're looking at more than twice that. Boulder, in 2018, refurbished their really Potassau Water Plant, back up to 40 million gallons a day. They did it for $30 million. You're talking numbers seven times that? There have been times when I was on this council and brought and tried to bring information to you, and you wouldn't even look at it. You're going to burden the ratepayers. You're going to change the very nature of Westminster from a tree-filled, green lawn space into concrete bricks and rock. I do not want that. Safe neighborhoods are defined by green grass and trees. Please step back, find out the alternatives, find out the negatives. I'm more than willing to share with any new people here. And for the continuing people here, I beseech you, find the humility to admit that staff has misled you. Staff has given you bad information to manipulate you. In 2021, there were five people on council, three elected in that election, who promised to lower the water rates. You cannot do this by taking on such enormous debt. You have betrayed the people who voted for you. And you're doing it because you've been misled, and you have too much hubris, too much pride, to admit you've been misled. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Cos. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dan, and I live in Countryside. The PRL Vision Plan Tomas presented at last week's study session has a statistically valid survey that says that less than 18% of Westminster residents use a dog park. It also says that 90% of residents want the city to restore natural areas. Why does the proposed Westminster Hills ordinance have no mandate for protection or preservation of the land? Why are you continuing to insist on removing more than 10% of our 3,800 acres of open space, protected open space? Calling Westminster Hills a natural area does absolutely nothing to preserve or protect it. And the suggested area management plan has no authority, measurable outcomes, or deadlines. This ordinance completely contradicts every scientific authority that has contacted your staff. They've told you repeatedly that off-leash dogs are not compatible with protecting open space. Paying $400,000 a year to reseed and clean the area only for it to be trampled and peed on again by dogs every year is a complete waste of taxpayer money and PRL effort. By shrinking, not removing, the off-leash area, you'll dramatically reduce taxpayer costs and restoration time. This ordinance still excludes many residents, leash dogs, and wildlife who are not comfortable using the space in the presence of off-leash dogs. Why do the guardians get to use all the space, but my daughter and I can't run the trails outside our own home without being chased? You now have a mandate, given by the survey results from last week. Any counselor who disregards what the vast majority of their constituents wants should be recalled immediately. Please listen to the 90% of residents who want this open space protected, and do not approve this ordinance. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tracy Hagie. Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and counselors, for all the attention you've given to the Westminster off-leash dog park, and your time spending talking with us. I had two things I wanted to just mention briefly. I just, among other people, have found it interesting that the 420-acre off-leash dog park, as it is still currently referred to on the city website, has suddenly grown to 470 acres. And that has left a bunch of us wondering where the extra acreage has come from. After reading the recent packet that was posted Wednesday, I have yet again become even more confused by the discrepancies and mistakes that are being made in these reports from PRL. The new proposed ordinance calls out that the northern portion of the Walnut Creek Exchange parcel remains accessible to on-leash dogs but not off-leash dogs. It goes on to say the northern portion of the Walnut Creek Exchange parcel that nestles into Meadowview Estates subdivision, approximately 5.89 acres, is also recommended to retain an on-leash dog-only area as it currently operates. It continues to go on to discuss this, and talks about the original agreement made with the neighborhood at the time the property exchange was determined. So, I happen to live in that neighborhood and back to that space. I do not live in Meadowview Estates. I live in Walnut Creek. These, there are many discrepancies in here. Number one, this area referenced has never operated as part of the dog park. When I bought my house here, I believe the land was slated for an elementary school prior to the exchange happening. It has always been a neighborhood access point to the dog park, and the Walnut Creek HOA even has signs posted saying, "No Dog Park Parking." This area, and I went by again today before I came here to just make sure, is overgrown. The grass is up to my waist. Our neighbors, we take our own mowers and mow behind our fences because that area is not maintained. There is one small path to get to the dog park. So to count this in the acreage and then continue to say, talk about this, this was part of a dog park, is not accurate. And to clarify further, the Walnut Creek Exchange parcel is not, quote, "nestled" in Meadowview Estates. It's nestled in the Walnut Creek subdivision. This is just one more example of the many instances of the lack of accurate and factual information that is being presented by PRL. These past few months have been exhausting to have to continually check everything that PRL is saying in their documents. My second concern and question I have for PRL is when they mention the topic of weed control, and state that staff will continue to use best practices in integrated pest management and weed control. How do we protect our pets, people, and our pollinators? How are they going to let us know when they are using pesticides and herbicides on that land?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. The next speaker is A.J. Haas. Welcome.
Yeah, hello. Thank you. I really appreciate you guys' opportunity to speak here. I'm a local homeowner and business owner in Westminster, live right down the street, also own a business here in Jefferson, at Adams County. I've lived in Colorado since 1993. I went to elementary school in Boulder. I've lived in El Dorado Springs. I've lived in Summit County. I've lived in every part of Denver Metro, from Inglewood to owning a home here in Westminster. I just want to talk to you guys basically about this dog park and why it's so crucial to this area. I've seen a lot of communities develop. I've lived in very nice parts of California, New York, Florida, and this is something that almost nowhere in the nation has. It's what makes our area so nice. It's what keeps our local home value and interest in the area, why people come here. And this is something that we get a lot of tourism from, and that's local tourism. That is from other people in Denver. I've met people that come all the way from Centennial to come to our Westminster off-leash dog park because it is so special, and it is something that nowhere else has. When they talk about numbers, I was never given any PRL survey. Again, I live here. My wife lives here. We don't know about this, but I can tell you, my neighbors and everyone in our area own dogs, and most of them do enjoy the dog park. So I'm not sure on these numbers that are being presented. However, I would like to say that this is something that, again, all of Denver Metro would benefit from. When you look at the dog parks, again, I've lived everywhere over Denver Metro, Boulder County, and up in the mountains. This is something that we have that is unique. This is something that they do not have. If you go to downtown and go to those dog parks, they are pathetic. They are not anything friendly, and people from Cap Hill come to our dog park because they don't have the resources, and that's why it's so important to our entire community, the entire Denver Metro area, is looking at us as an example, and looking at what we've done in our community, and if we can keep that and maintain that for the people. I am also an avid hunter. I know about wildlife preservation. I know about land preservation. This is something that it is plenty fine. I see bikers all the time. I'm there three days a week. And I can tell you for the last three years that I've been there, for three days a week, we never see issues. We don't see dogs attacking people, chasing bikers. A lot of this, I think, is a very small voice, people that would like to be heard, and they are important to consider, but I don't think they are the majority. I think the majority is right here that are talking to you and letting you know how much it means to the community. For every one person here, there are hundreds that are backing us, that are saying that they want to be heard. We are here to be heard. So I thank you guys so much again for this opportunity, but please, this would be detrimental to lose in our community, and it's not something that, once we lose, it's gone. We will never get it back. And I ask you to please hold that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel Alvedrez. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak with all of you today. I just wanted to come up and kind of echo the sentiments of our last speaker. This dog park is really a cherished part of this community. I'm a local nurse and nurse practitioner, and I place a very big emphasis with my patients on finding ways to manage their mental health. And there are not a lot of communities in Denver who have a resource like this, where pet owners, where I've encouraged people to own dogs because they are so good for your overall health, can find a place to be with loved ones, to meet with their community, to be with their dogs, to be able to walk unhindered by leashes. And, you know, you have a lot of responsibility at the dog park as a dog owner, and I think the vast majority of us are aware of that and doing what we need to do. But I really hope that you take into consideration the impact of the mental health benefit that this park has for dog owners, as well as the other people who share the park. We see people who are running, who are on bikes, people out on wheelchairs, and I don't see the issues that I've been hearing presented to this council. And so I hope you guys really take that into consideration today when you make your decision as to how you're going to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Jurgens. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tom Jurgens, a Westminster resident. Thank you, Mayor and City councilors. I am speaking to the June 24th Resolution 10C, which has been postponed to July 22nd, the next city council meeting. This resolution sponsor is Consular DeMott. Consular DeMott wants to allow concealed carry weapons owners to carry guns on city property. This includes city hall and recreational centers where our children can play. He claims that concealed carry weapon holders are uniquely law-abiding. They are not. There is no accurate data that shows that concealed carry weapon owners are more law-abiding than the rest of the population who possess a background check. Authors such as John Lott, the discredited author of More Guns, Less Crime, peddle the lie that concealed carry weapon holders are uniquely law-abiding. Annalyses by the Associated Press, Rand Research, Washington Post, factcheck.org, and The New Yorker have debunked Lott's false claims, and by extension, Consular DeMott's claims. Another myth implied by Consular DeMott is that more guns stop more crimes. They do not. Again, what data shows is that more guns in a society result in more murders and more suicides. Studies by a Scientific American and the John Hawkins School of Public Health support this fact. We don't need more guns in more places. It has a recipe for violence and death. Do not flood our city spaces with guns. It makes us less safe. Vote no on DeMott's Gun Proliferation Resolution on July 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Guthrie. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor McNally, Mayor Pro Tem, and esteemed councilors. My name is Andrew Guthrie, and I'm representing the Westy Dog Park Guardians. First and foremost, on a personal note, I would like to thank you all for your time and effort you've put towards the dog park. Meeting after meeting, you've spent hours hearing from residents about the issue. We appreciate you listening. As we close in on the vote tonight, the Guardians would like to humbly ask for two small but significant updates to the proposed Counselors' Bill 23. First, the proposed Section 13-117A to C, say that 10 times fast, talks about the limitations set forth in Subsection B of 13-53. This subsection is exactly what brought up my initial question to council months ago. Who has the final decision? This subsection allows for any city manager to unilaterally change the use of this land at any point. As stated in your handout, the Guardians would request this section be updated to any usage change must be approved by city council. This not only clarifies previous confusion, it keeps this cherished land under the purview of elected officials and not in one person's hands. Our second request is in regards to the proposed Section 13-117C and the carve-out of the Sisters of the New Covenant land purchase. Included in your handout is the original city council agenda item for the land purchase. While this might be your first time seeing this, it was included in our cat packet, so we've had months to analyze it and the far-reaching implications of this purchase. To address the issue at hand, I'd like to draw your attention to the last page with the designated trail buffer notated in yellow. The reason for this inclusion and mapping is because of an existing trail which cuts through the corner of the northeast corner of the land acquisition. This trail corner existed and was used by off-leash dogs for years before the purchase. All parties in this transaction were aware of its existence and usage. While this couple hundred feet of trail that touches the land acquisition doesn't seem much, its closure would have a snowball effect on the whole area. First, it forced the majority of traffic from the 100th Street lot to the Greenway Trail. Picture it: the Greenway Trail, which cuts diagonally through the dog park, would now be the westernmost existing trail, reducing the access to trails by approximately 100 acres. Since this may be your first time seeing the full agenda item from 2011, I urge you to remove the Sisters carve-out from this bill in order to complete a full analysis of the city's potential obligations and financial impact. The impact of this decision is much bigger than off-leash dogs. I would just like to end by thanking Director Herrera-Michler about potentially reaching out to Jefferson County about the easement. I think that would solve all these problems in one fell swoop. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tanya Yost. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for always being so patient and listening to everyone. I actually brought my giant cat binder. This was the binder that included the current Sisters 2011 purchase documents. This was the binder that included the current Sisters' 2011 purchase documents. I certainly appreciate the efforts of the park staff to find a solution to the off-leash area. I'm in favor of the proposal to codify off-leash use. However, review of proposed Bill Number 23 does raise concerns, and I would ask that amendments be made before final approval. Specifically, Section 1, Part C, the dog-free area. In addition to making the complete western 600 acres no dogs, Bill Number 23 now seeks to add the 25.49 acres known as the Sisters' property acquisition to the no-dog area. It appears that this proposed change may incur unnecessary costs for removal of current trails, damage to natural areas, and increased fencing. As a member of the CAT, the Sisters' June 11th purchase information and maps were provided for review and discussion in our binders. The current plan is now to codify off-leash use. The city is not changing the prior 16 years of open and obvious off-leash use in Hooz area. In fact, off-leash use was increased to the full 1,000 acres in 2008, three full years before the Sisters' land was obtained. The adjacent and off-leash use pre-existed the 2011 purchase. Bill Number 23 now proposes that the 2011 purchase documents preclude off-leash dog use over any portion of that 25 acres. This is simply not set forth in the 2011 purchase documents and is overreached. There is no identified dispute raised by the Sisters or other funders. Have they been contacted? I guess from what we've learned this morning, this afternoon, at the pre-meeting, apparently not yet. If there truly is a question or concern with active or passive use, the trail west could be adjusted at the one corner closest to the Sisters' property. This would be cost-effective, but does not seem necessary at this point. It should also be noted that there has been one use change since 2011, the building of the cement trail in 2023. The 2011 Sisters' purchase agreement did set out a 30-foot strip of land along 100th for creation of a future trail. The newly-built cement multi-use trail far exceeds the allotted 30-foot use. In fact, I measured with my gators to avoid snakes. This new trail encroaches 86 feet from 100th onto the Sisters' property, a full 56 feet greater than the 30 feet set forth in the 2011 agreement. Was the trail approved by the Sisters? What are the, where are these documents? They're not attached. The cement trail actually appears to be the only improper use of the land section as provided from the 2011 document. Section 1, Part C must be removed from Bill Number 23. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cindy Stoudt.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. As you can see, we did give you a one-page kind of a questions document that lists all of our questions that we're doing, so that you have that to refer to. The document I'm providing counsel is going to expand on a couple of questions that we have about the packet as it relates to the proposed management plan for the Hooz area. I'll talk about two subjects. Dollars and ditches, my favorite. First, the dollars. I have three questions about the $1.3 million fiscal impact to the taxpayers that's broken down into four points on the proposal. Point number one is $120,000 to $150,000 to develop the ASMP. We would like to offer an alternative to begin the development of the ASMP. Consular Carmelia once stated to me that the Guardians should be heavily involved in the trail map process as we're the ones who use the space. We propose a collaboration with the city to develop the framework for the ASMP and begin work on the trail map. Use us to cut down on the taxpayer burden for the consultant cost. So that's my fiscal question number one on your handout. Would PRL collaborate with the Guardians for that framework and trail map? Point number two is $100,000 budgeted for early action projects. We totally agree with that. We'd love to be included on prioritizing the items on that list. Points three and four, at a total cost of over $1.1 million, include nine new FTEs and their required vehicles. We want to point out, this is a request that covers open space for the entire city. It's not just specific to Hooz. So our second question is, what are the staffing requirements specific only to Hooz? A very basic budget priority question that we have. Based on the $170,000 number used for current annual expenses and annual estimates of 750,000 visitors, this area has proven to have a very low per-user taxpayer burden. Our question then is, how is the proposal to intensively manage Hooz a top priority item in the overall budget? What human needs would take a backseat to this restoration project instead of a simpler management project? Now about ditches. According to the proposal, access to the Dry Creek Valley ditch remains unresolved. From what we've heard to date, there have been no claims ever filed regarding E. coli exposure in the 24 years of off-leash use at the dog park. In fact, I actually had an extensive conversation with the Dry Creek Valley ditch people in March. They mentioned they would just post signs warning of possible high E. coli. Our question, can that be done by the city of Westminster to address the liability?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Beth McBride.
Welcome.
Thank you again for letting us speak. Mine is very simple. It's, I'm a volunteer with the Guardians because I love the community and I love the park that we've had for 24 years. For 13 weeks, total of 43 days, we have been volunteering at the park to give people the latest information, updates. After we've attended the city council meetings, there are two main questions that we always get every time somebody comes into the park. It's what is the latest information, which we deliver? The second is, the most asked question is, what are they planning to build here on the park land? In 1988, there was mention of a shopping center. Older residents still don't believe it will remain a park. This belief has been handed down to other generations. The issue of how the land is labeled is not clear to the public and citizens of Westminster. The question has been asked numerous times with no clear definitive answer given, nor shared on the city's website. The city needs to lay to rest the question of zoning once and for all with clear and open communication. My question would be, could we not please designate it as 01 Open Space? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sandy Lane.
Welcome.
Hello. Hi. Oops. Good evening, Mayor McNally, and Mayor Pro Tem Nermella, and esteemed councillors. My name is Sandy Lane, and I am a Westy Dog Park Guardians volunteer. I would like to quickly address concerns around the zoning of Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Park. As stated in tonight's packet, the dog park is zoned Planned Unit Development, or PUD, while carrying a PRL classified open space designation. We appreciate the current safeguards in place to prevent development, including the need for a preliminary development plan and official development plan. The Guardians' concern is that the Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Park, a place of great importance to our community, could be developed with the consent of future willing city council and staff. We believe this place is significant enough to protect for generations to come. Therefore, we respectfully request the city council to rezone this land to Open Space 01 and designate it as a regional park, similar to the Stanley Lake Regional Park across the street. As such, we believe park users are savvy enough not to confuse this land as a manicured, water-intensive, traditional park site. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Aubrey Hicks.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me again. I just really like talking to you guys. Mayor McNally, Mayor Pro Tem Nermella, and esteemed councillors, hello. I'm here tonight representing the Guardians to talk about community engagement, which is mentioned in the PRL proposal. Less nervous this time. The Guardians have stated repeatedly that we are willing and able to be an ongoing collaborative partner with the city in caring for Hooz. I understand that a councillor member suggested an independent board of directors consisting of park users. To paraphrase Consular Ireland from June 3rd, let the volunteers run it. We call this a Guardians partnership. It is clear that the most efficient and effective form of a Guardians partnership is one where city council no longer has to be a facilitator between staff and citizens. So our question is, will council direct PRL to give a Guardian representative a permanent seat for any management plan development, citizen boards, or advisory groups? And will city collaborate with the Guardians to implement a Hooz board made up of park users? We ask this because public trust has been and continues to be damaged throughout this process. The Guardians' support base grows daily. The Guardians' presence will help renew public trust. The city manager says at every council meeting that he wants to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. By partnering with Guardians, we know we can accomplish this together. Again, we ask that the Guardians have a seat at the table and active input in decisions regarding Hooz. The cost to the taxpayers is too great, and we can no longer afford to follow this repeated pattern of PRL proposal, public comment, city council direction, PRL revised proposal, public comment, city council direction, lather, rinse, repeat. Thank you again for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Linda Bova.
Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. After hearing about PRL wanting to restore the Hooz to a short grass prairie, I wanted to see for myself what a short grass prairie was supposed to look like because I care about our open space, and the Guardians care about the open space too. We just, it's not just about the dogs. We want to take care of our land. Myself and three friends went to the Prairie Conservation Center in Aurora and met with Fendi Dupree, a natural resource specialist and the volunteer coordinator for open space and natural resources. The Prairie Conservation Center has 1,000 acres of open space, which Fendi started restoration on the prairie in 2022. Fendi gave us a tour, walking through the prairie, pointing out native and invasive vegetation. She explained how she and her group of volunteers have been removing invasive plants by using shovels to dig them up. They also gather seeds from the native plants for replanting. When they replant the seeds, they manually water them with watering cans. The seeds are on their own after that to germinate, no irrigation. Fendi also said that the prairie is constantly changing. The prairie is not what it was when the buffalo roamed. Some years, there are droughts, some years, there's rain. And now we're dealing with climate change. She's trying to find the right balance for biodiversity. This was fascinating to me because they started with only 20 out of 1,000 acres, just she and the volunteers, no large staff from open space, no heavy equipment, just shovels. What also made this outing so enjoyable was that Fendi was so genuine, wanting to teach and share. She would tell us, we could tell that she loved her work. She wants the volunteers to really connect with nature. With the right support from PRL, the Hooz and the dog park could have a similar relationship with a volunteer coordinator and Guardians working as a team toward the same goal. This could be a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bonnie Bass.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and councillors. My name is Bonnie Bass, and I've lived in Westminster for almost 20 years. I have never owned a dog. And even though I'm not a dog owner, the dog park has been something I've treasured and enjoyed since I moved to Westminster. I regularly go and walk through the park, meeting nothing but the friendliest and happiest dogs and their owners, which brings me endless joy and relaxation. I've started going even more frequently now that my neighbor Dan and his two dogs, Leila and Rosie, go every day. I firmly oppose reducing the size of the dog park, and I'm here to personally speak against the misleading and false statements several other residents have said about not feeling welcome or safe at the park. I have been to the park and even participated in the Guardians' organized Poop Pickup Day. Not once have I ever felt uncomfortable, unsafe, or unwelcome. The idea that the park can be maintained when not, when even non-dog-owning residents like myself are willing to help keep the park clean is absurd and untrue. If someone like me, who adores getting to stroll around, having friendly and many times soaked wet dogs come up and say hi, then anyone can do so. I also have concerns about the multiple surveys put out about the park. I was informed of the results by the Guardians each time, and I don't understand why three different surveys, all showing overwhelming support for keeping the current off-leash area, have been ignored and deemed invalid. I also don't understand why there's been constant talk of how degraded and damaged the park is. After 20 years, the park has, still has all the amazing birds singing constantly every time I'm there. And the vegetation and flowers are thriving and beautiful during the summer months. I have never seen a ranger or any PRL employee during any of my visits to the park. Therefore, I support keeping the current off-leash area at its current size, but mandating better management of the park and even more community inclusion to ensure it can be a gem for Westminster for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Stan Allen.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and councillors, I'm back again. So thanks for listening to me. I come back tonight a little frustrated, but I'll keep it very professional as always. This process has continued at pretty much every turn to be very misleading and downright false at several points. From the ERO report, which was sold as an independent, you know, non-biased survey, we know that's not true. I looked at the original myself and read it. It's, there's no mention of off-leash dogs, there's no mention of dogs damaging the environment. There's no mention of endangered species, other than the fact that they didn't see any there and that most endangered species don't have a habitat viable in that area. E. coli has been brought up repeatedly. And as someone already mentioned, there's never been a complaint about E. coli in the ditch. And test results, which I'm no scientist, test results when the water goes into the park and when it leaves the park are virtually the same, meaning it can't possibly be the dogs causing the E. coli. With that in mind, the next thing I want to talk about is the comments that have been made from both sides about popularity and who uses the park, who would vote to keep it the same size as it is currently. We've seen from the three different surveys, as Bonnie just mentioned, the one that was most noticeable to me was right after the public comment meeting. I believe it was the end or beginning of March, I believe, March 6th. 89.8% of almost 1,000 Westminster residents voted to keep the dog park the current size it is off-leash. The most recent survey, which I took a quote from, was very vague, and it was simply, would you support restoring our open spaces? If you asked me that question plainly and we weren't talking about a dog park, I would say yes as well. I would be in the 90 percentile. It doesn't ask, should we... It doesn't ask, should we close the dog park to do that? It doesn't ask, do you support the dog park at all? It simply asks if we're conservationists, which I believe most people are, including every single one of the Guardians. With that in mind, I really urge you with this most recent proposal to really focus on a couple of things. One, the majority of Westminster, as shown by multiple surveys, does value the land, but we also value that dog park and the ability to take our dogs off-leash. I see everyone, from families with kids of all ages to, I literally have a picture on my phone of them carrying their newborn child around the park with their dog, because they can't walk a dog on leash and carry a newborn, bikers without dogs, even families that they all hop on their bikes with their dogs and bike around the park every Saturday. I see them every time, they know my dog, I don't know if they know my name, but they know my dogs' names, so it counts for something. With that in mind, I really urge you to vote to preserve the current acreage of off-leash use, but ensure that, as someone already mentioned, no city manager or no individual can decide that they want to restrict off-leash access in the future. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sherry Griffin.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Sherry Griffin. Thank you again and again for my point of view, a limitless patience and a willingness to listen. I'm here to talk about another dog park. The Sandy River Delta, known by locals as 1,000 Acres Dog Park, is operated in the US Forest, by the US Forest Service in Oregon. It's actually 1,400 acres, although US Forest lists the acreage at 1,500. It's located 30 minutes from downtown Portland. It's a popular destination for dog owners with trails for hiking, horseback riding, and biking. It's bordered on the west side by the Sandy River and on the north by the Columbia River. It's a fantastic place to take your dog swimming in the summer. It was purchased in 1991 by the US Forest Service and changed from a cattle ranch to its current condition with ongoing efforts to restore the native habitat. For the most part, other than the native tree cover of cottonwood, ash, willow, and red osier dogwood, the ground forms and shrubbery here are a dense display of non-native invasive weeds. When I lived in Portland, I was a daily visitor. Back then, it was free, but just like the who's, it experienced similar issues of increased visitation requiring additional service to the area. It took two and a half years to make the change to a fee site. See the timeline on the Sandy River Delta fee document that I provided. There's a daily use fee of $5 available at any local recreation pass vendor or a $30 annual forest pass. Details can also be found in those documents provided. I realize that because this property is operated by the US Forest Service and who's is not, implementing such a change would be different, and any pass system would be different. I'm bringing this up not to point to a specific solution, but to illustrate that solutions can be found. I also wanted to address a statement made during public comment at the June 24th meeting that Westminster Hills Dog Park is three times larger than the largest dog park in the country, which in fact is not true. Granted, the speaker may not have done the research, but don't say a thing is fact when it is in fact not. I endeavor to be truthful. It was instilled in me as a kid to tell the truth, as I'm sure most present here were taught, and it's a disturbing trend in our culture to misrepresent the truth and engage in disinformation to gain an objective. Again, I just want to thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council for listening, always being here so late, not getting a proper dinner. Just thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Karen Colapiti.
Welcome.
Hello. I have to admit that I have never been to this dog park, but I've heard enough about it to know that it's very important for people. And Nurse spoke about its importance for the mental health and the physical health, and I, it seems that those, those concerns should count in the decision-making for this park. I would rather see open space in parks than a lot more mental health clinics and hospitals, personally. But as many popular places, I mentioned in a letter that, you know, Yellowstone National Park, Rocky Mountain National Park, they set limits as to how many people can visit. And it seems right that maybe some limitations should be set on the park, not as far as size, but as far as times of visitation to cut down the wear and tear. And my suggestion would be that people with license plates that have an even number, they be allowed to visit the, the dog park on, for instance, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. And people with odd numbers on their license plates be allowed to visit the park on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sundays, and have a day off for the park for its native habitats and for people caring for it. It also seems reasonable that people around the, the dog park, interested people, could enforce this kind of watching of the license plates and, and making sure that people are not overusing the park, and that responsibility be given to, to the people around that area rather than other people, and they would be the recipients of the fines as well as the park itself, as far as using the fines in a, in a good way. So I, I think it's, it, it sounds like a good place for animals and humans. Of course, the native animals probably are going to suffer, but they're going to suffer, I think, a little less with dogs there than with multiple trails planned. And bikers are actually considered a little more dangerous for wildlife, I think, than, than dogs. So that's just an aside.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Welcome.
It's good to be back in front of you. I'm Tom Lambo. I'm here lift up Westminster in prayer. God's hand is moving, and I hope you are seeing it. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' victorious name, I come before you and ask that your will be done in Westminster. You are victorious Lord of all. All creation bows before you. In Proverbs 21:30, it states, "No wisdom, no understanding, no counsel will prevail against the Lord." It may appear to us that the world is falling apart, or systems are out of control. That is how we perceive it. You have everything where you need it to bring about your will. Work in Westminster and bring about your change. Father, lift up the youth of Westminster to you. Summers are where lasting memories are made. For some, there is a lot of unsupervised time. Your word is, your word is full of wisdom and strength, which, which needs to be heard. Be with our youth and keep them safe. Temptation can hit hard. 1 Corinthians 10:13 states, "No temptation has overcome you except what is common to mankind. And God is faithful; he will not let you be tempted beyond what you can bear. But when you are tempted, he will provide a way out, so you can endure it." Remind our youth that you are near them, and you can be relied upon. Put your word into action. Remind our community there are youth that need guidance of responsible adults. We have the adults. Inspire them to come alongside the youth and guide them. Let them be the way out of temptation. The world is changing. You are moving in every aspect of our lives, and life isn't as it was before. Your hand is working behind the scenes to bring about your will. Although change is taking place, we are, we are the people you speak of in Matthew 13, 14 through 15. You state, "In them is fulfilled the prophecy of Isaiah. You will be ever hearing but never understanding; you will be ever seeing but never perceiving. For this people's hearts has come, become calloused; they hardly hear with their ears, and they have closed their eyes. Otherwise, they might see with their eyes, hear with their ears, understand with their hearts, and turn, and I would heal them." Guide us in the change you are bringing about. Grant us the faith to trust in you when we see change happening that we don't understand. This is your time, this is your land. Help us to understand our place in these times. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Farb.
Welcome.
I love dogs. Well, most dogs. Dogs are special creatures, and we are special creatures to dogs. I can't think of any other creatures of two different species on this earth that mean so much to one another, that were meant for one another. I especially like big dogs. As an adult, I've only had Labradors and Lab mixes. I love taking my dogs with me to the mountains on road trips, camping, or even just walking around the neighborhood. I even helped train a very special, incredibly intuitive young Labrador that became an emotional support service animal for an Afghanistan war veteran with serious PTSD. Ironically, the dog's name was Pax, Latin for peace. It was bittersweet, primarily sweet, when Pax left with his XGI soldier to begin their lives together. I also briefly fostered two other Veteran Service dogs in training. Don't think, though, that I ever took my dogs to a dog park. So with this month-long, shall we say, discussion of the 470-acre Westminster Hills Open Space Park as a romping ground for our special canine friends, I was amazed at the outcry and the fervor, but especially the dedication of the Human Companion residents who are fighting to keep this huge, huge area left in place for their dogs. No compromise, not even for a good-sized neighborhood 33-acre site. That's pretty impressive. This council, perhaps because of the pressure of its bogging constituency, looks to perhaps maintain the 470 acres in place with rules for us and for our special canine partners. And the city says it could spend millions of dollars to properly maintain this huge dog park. Meanwhile, members of council, how do we treat our unhoused fellow humans? You won't even provide an acre or two of open space in our city, not even a half percent the size of this dog park, for sanctioned, safe, clean, warm in the winter, cool in the summer, hygienic space for any, any of our unhoused residents to rest, to get the services they need, to help them heal, let them have some joy of their own. You will spend as much on this great open space dog park as you could on the 300 to 400 unhoused women and men in our city, but will you? Maybe you could set aside one or two acres of Western Hills for safe outdoor space for our unhoused. I love dogs, but I also love my fellow human beings. Do you? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Wayne Westler.
Welcome.
Thank you. Last time I was here, I showed you a shirt my dog's bought. This is the most recent one. So, so Bonnie and others have stolen some of my thunder, but it's all good. As an engineer, I look at facts, I look at evidence, and that's what matters. I heard opposition talk tonight. One gentleman unfortunately stated he was bit five times. I feel sorry for that gentleman. I would think after the first time, he would probably remedy that situation, but there's no evidence of that being bit, right? So that could be hyperbole and maybe not true. In addition, he didn't state if the dog was leashed or unleashed. He just said he was bit. It falls upon the owner. There have been multiple city meetings, and I've never heard anyone state it's for dogs only. It's an open space, open for joggers, runners, hikers, bikes, people with little children, families. I heard opposition talk today about dogs peeing and killing natural vegetation. I have not seen any evidence, again, pure speculation. Also, I heard hyperbole tonight from that same person, that they were chased, him and his daughter. I've never seen anyone being chased by any dogs. Again, they didn't state if the dog was off-leash or, or leashed. Never heard any reports. I heard tonight that no compromise was being brought forward, that the pro-dog people want it all or nothing. 470 acres, that's simply not true. The Westley Dog Group has literally gave you multiple different choices. The opposition is also not telling the truth about numbers. Majority, there were three surveys done, 80% or more each time has said, keep who's the way it is. In fact, council, at one meeting, questioned why three surveys were issued. No answer was given. Again, as a, as an engineer, I look at the data. The Westley Dog Group is not a small minority, as opposition has stated. They're speaking for the majority, 80% or more, not once, twice, but three times, have stated, keep the dog park as is. On Sunday, my dogs enjoyed the creek, they got their energy out, mental stimulation, they were happy, and after the showers, they were well-rested for the rest of the day. So I'd just like to state, vote no on the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. A couple of things. I do hope you all read the public comments that were submitted. I know it was late this afternoon, but I hope you really read those and did just give them a, there's some valuable thoughts and comments in there. Second, about the dog park. It's open space. It's not a dog park, it's open space, that's what the city bought it for, that's how it's tagged, it should remain open space. And as to the size, 400 acres. Let's be real, all of you know how big the farm is that Uplands is building on, from 88th to 84th, Lowell to Federal. That's less than 150 acres. I can't imagine needing 400-plus acres for a dog park, as I sit and look across the street at 150 acres. It's just unfathomable to me. Also, there was some information in the packet about the ditch and the ditch owner and, and what the requirements were going to be for the city in regards to that ditch that runs through there. So I hope you all take that into consideration. Now we're, now, now let's back up and talk about Uplands for a minute, or Chad Ellington and his development. What a disaster. The stormwater violations that continually happen over there, and you can attest that from Public Works. The continual closures of streets without any notification to our neighborhood. All along, all we've asked is to be kept in the loop. They closed Lowell overnight. It was closed for several weeks, between 82nd and 84th. Got that open, now we closed 84th from Lowell to Irving. Not really such a big deal, but the detour signs are lacking all the way around. There were people in, from out of town over the weekend, I talked to, they had no idea where they were going, because they couldn't come across 84th. They were detoured onto Irving, then what? You're detoured off of Lowell, then what? Next, let's talk about Bradburn Drive. They've got it closed right now. Why? There's no work being done up there. That's the B properties for the Uplands. That's the B properties for the Upland. Other than for a parking place for this construction crew, they can park down in the B1 lot where they're doing the construction. People in the area need access in and out. Now, along with that, again, detour signs lacking all the way around. I have brought this to the city's attention last week. Today, we start work down at Lowell and Shaw. Oh, no, excuse me, not Lowell. Circle and Shaw. Again, no forewarning to any of the people, even though Uplands website says they were going to knock and talk with everybody and let them know. I had several complaints from neighbors. Got up this morning, couldn't get out of the neighborhood on Circle, on Shaw. Again, detour signs, zero. I just can't tell you how disrespectful this is to our neighborhood. All we asked all along was to be kept in the loop, and that's not happening. So I'm asking that somehow, some way, this council does that or the city manager's office sees to these things being done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Giselle Hurstfeld. Welcome.
Hey. Hello, Westminster City Council and members of the Westminster community. My name is Giselle Hurstfeld, and I am here today on behalf of the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. As some of you in the community may be aware, there's been an ongoing effort for the past few years to develop a mountain biking trail encircling the most contaminated part of Rocky Flats, a former nuclear weapons site immediately west of where we are standing or sitting now. Between 1952 and 1989, the Rocky Flats plant shipped in tons of weapons-grade plutonium produced at the Hanford site and used it to produce 70,000, yeah, that's 70,000 plutonium pits, which is the radioactive core of a nuclear bomb. During this time, the Rocky Flats site experienced at least two major plutonium fires that blew radioactive particles across the surrounding metropolitan areas, which was, of course, obscured from the public, as well as a string of horrendously irresponsible waste disposal and storage failures, including the 903 pad, where 5,000 metal barrels of plutonium waste were left outside to corrode for 11 years, leaking all that waste into the ground and surrounding waterways. There was also the accidental invention of pondcrete, a dangerous sludgy mixture of liquid radioactive waste and powdered concrete that never quite hardened the way it was supposed to, but was stored in thousands of stacked cardboard boxes anyway. And of course, that created exactly the mess you would imagine it did. The site was shut down when an FBI raid found evidence of severe environmental crimes. And while full cleanup of the site was initially estimated by the Department of Energy to cost $37 billion, what we got was only a partial cleanup that totaled $7.3 billion and ended in 2005. Only the central operable unit, the factory buildings where the pits themselves were produced, were actually cleared of some contaminated material and buried under six feet of dirt and designated as an EPA Superfund Site. The rest of the site was left as is and designated as a wildlife refuge that was opened to the public in 2018. In fact, a Reuters article published in 2022 showed that US Congress and military have a pattern of shaving a lot of money off of their cleanup costs by designated polluted areas as wildlife refuges. It's a very convenient loophole to save lots of money and leave contaminated land as is while greenwashing the land to the local community. While independent sampling at Rocky Flats shows time and again that this site remains highly contaminated with plutonium particles and other radioactive isotopes, several local governments, including Westminster, have been part of an intergovernmental agreement to develop a mountain biking trail on the site and construct an overpass to connect this trail to the wider network of Westminster Trail Systems in order to facilitate public access to one of the most radioactively contaminated sites in the country. Construction of this Westminster overpass crossing Indiana Street also runs the risk of disrupting and unearthing radioactive soil near the dog park that your constituents are speaking about today so passionately. So shout out to them. And everyone here should be really concerned about this. If anyone wants to speak to me, I will be outside in the lobby. I have more information on this. Thank you so much for hearing me today.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dino Valente. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor McNally, members of council. I'm here to talk about two of Colorado's favorite subjects tonight. Money and weed. Let's start with money. I was here a couple of weeks ago listening to a presentation concerning the courthouse. I've been following documentation concerning fire safety upgrades, new stations, personnel renovations. And then we have the fairly contentious but done water treatment facility. Those are three big-ticket items to finance. I am highly concerned that we are looking at multiple different methods with which to finance them. I'm concerned that we're not looking for economies of scale to try to save money and bundle everything together in one funding mechanism, one sort of a tax, COP funding, whatever. The more I listen to the court financing through that hearing, the more uneasy I became about that whole project. I have no reassurance as somebody who hopes to be here 30 years down the road when it's all paid off. I do not like seeing that our fire department is being sacrificed to the ballot. They should get the same treatment. It should be a no-brainer. We need to take care of them. They take care of us. Second subject, weed. No, not that kind of weed. The city is ripe with weeds. We've been hearing for weeks about native grasses, what dogs do or don't do to them. Again, cat person here, never going to go out there, but I respect what people are saying. I've driven down Federal and realized that the landscaping in the medians between 72nd and 74th, those aren't hedges. Those are weeds. I drive up and down Lowell every day. The brick pavers, all weeds coming up through them. 80th Avenue where my father lives. Spent most of the Fourth of July talking with his neighbors about how bad the weed mitigation is. So high in the city easements there, you can't even see that there's a trail there. Doesn't matter if there's a dog on it or not. You can't see it. We need to get this contract figured out. We need to get our contractors out there mowing. I haven't seen a mower out there in over a year. We deserve better. Our city deserves to look better. And if our personnel are not getting their contracts taken care of and holding the contractors to the fire, then maybe it's time to fire the personnel responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker.
I just want to say thanks to everyone that spoke. If you didn't use your whole time, you thanked us and sat down. We got through that, and it's only 8:25. I applaud you, and we need a break, so we'll be back.
Why am I cold?
Oh, there it is. Okay, that brings us to City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilors, ladies and gentlemen in attendance, and anybody who might be watching online. Real quick, just looking for a thumbs up from my Parks, Rec, and Library Director, but I think the number for our attendance at the July 4th activities was 11,800. Yes, thank you. So, good news there. Just wanted to follow up with everybody on that. And this first slide, just some updates real quick on downtown Westminster. So we have two downtown Westminster parks that are currently under construction. One is a temporary downtown dog park. The reason for that project is, is that the green grass that was where our Center Park will be and is currently also under construction, is that's where people used to take their dogs, and so we needed to provide someplace down in the downtown for them to take it while that Center Park is, is under construction. And so, we expect the temporary downtown dog park to be open the second week of August. If you drive down there, you'll see sidewalks and grading and things like that going on. But there'll be some trees down there, some tables, chairs, shade structures. The intent is you can go down there, relax, enjoy, let your dog do your, do their thing, and, and perhaps build community. The next bullet there is on Friday, June 21st, the downtown Center Park began construction. And they've been moving dirt down there for about a week now. And so that's a long-term project. It's over $10 million cost, but it will open late fall of 2025. So that will be a very, very nice addition. In the upper right-hand corner is the picture of the future downtown Center Park. In the center is a picture of our temporary dog park in the downtown. And then the, the last thing I would point out is the, the Woonerf landscaping, which is some landscaping that will be in between some of the buildings in the Woonerf residences. And so that's over on Harlan and 90th to 91st. And so, a nice addition down there, a place, for those who don't know, Woonerf is Dutch for pedestrian zone or walking zone. So, just an area where you can enjoy the outdoors and stroll. But some nice updates there. Next slide. Some Westy Winds, got more good news this past week with our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, receiving recognition. So, the Western Planner, which is a professional planning organization dedicated to elevating the quality of planning in the mountain and plains region, has awarded the city of Westminster's 2040 Comprehensive Plan its annual president's award. And so I think really the, the focus of that comprehensive plan and the recognition goes to integrating water supply and projected use to the land of the city. And so nicely done by all involved in our comprehensive plan. The award will be presented August 6th through 9th up in Cheyenne. And our own Planning Manager, John McConnell, will be in attendance to accept the award on behalf of the city. Next slide. Lots of things coming up, and so wanted to make sure we listed them all out here. So tomorrow evening is our Awards Advisory Committee meeting. That goes from 5:30 to 8:30 PM, and that's downstairs on the, the, the lower level. We're calling that the Colorado River Room, formerly called the Multipurpose Room. Planning Commission Meeting will be happening up here tomorrow evening from 7:00 to 10:00 PM here in Council Chambers. The Election Commission is meeting on Wednesday, July 10th, that's 6:00 to 7:00 PM here in the City Council Boardroom. The Inclusivity Board will be meeting also on Wednesday, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. That's a hybrid meeting, and that's in the Mount Blue Sky Conference Room upstairs, upper level. That's the former CMO Conference Room. And that's, has Teams access. Our Parks, Rec, Libraries and Open Space Advisory Board Meeting goes Thursday, July 11th, at 6:00 to 8:00 PM. That again is downstairs, Colorado River Room, formerly the Multipurpose Room. This Friday, Movie in the Park is the movie Wish. Invite the community to come out and enjoy that. Goes from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at Amherst Park. A partner event coming up this weekend, that's the 1870s Vintage Baseball Game, Saturday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that's at Wolf Run Park. And then our next City Council Study Session is Monday, July 15th, 6:30 PM. We will be doing that session in here, Vice the Boardroom, because it is, has a presentation and a Q and A with a large number of speakers. So we'll have presenters and then speakers on either side of the podium. And the topic there is the Greenway Trail, a bridge that will, is proposed over the Indiana Avenue connecting Westminster Hills Open Space in the east with Rocky Flats on the west side of the road. And that's, that's our, our main focus that evening. Next slide. Information-only items this evening, nothing. Next slide. And as always, encourage folks to reach out and contact us. You can call my office at 658-2006. You can email me directly at mfritag@westminsterco.gov. You can follow us on Facebook, correction, like us on Facebook, follow us on X, check us out on Instagram, certainly ring our bell at Nextdoor. And as mentioned earlier, we certainly want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. Depending on questions, that's all I have this evening.
Any questions? Mayor Protem?
I just want to congratulate staff, the Planning Department, Planning Division, as well as I know it was a multi-year process and a multi-departmental team that put that together. So I just want to congratulate you on your award.
Counselor Azadi?
I have some questions on some of the citizens' comments, if I can ask those now. City Manager, related to, and maybe even the City Attorney, can you please clarify if the subsection B of the proposed amendment tonight? Sorry, A, if that gives the City Manager unilateral authority to change the uses at any point?
Thank you, Counselor. No, I don't read the code language to allow staff to unilaterally do anything contrary to this code provision. So the, the ordinance that's drafted for Council's consideration tonight is a designation of this land as a off-leash dog area. And it is explicitly called out as such. The use regulations that are referenced there are subject to the provisions of this new section, which I read to say this new section, the City Council Declaration, takes precedence.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that first point, that that is not what this says for everyone listening. And like the City Attorney just said, what we're voting on tonight will take precedence. So there is no, so we, we, we need to move away from the narrative that this gives City Manager unilateral authority. It does not. The second question I have is related to the Sisters piece. Can, maybe the Director, can you come up and clarify the timing? So you mentioned in the pre-meeting that you hadn't asked yet on this. Can you explain why it's currently allowed, so off-leash usage is currently allowed? We knew about this easement before, so what is the reasoning for including this now? Is it that in order to rezone properly and do it properly? So we, we have had it improperly this whole time, and we're trying to correct the history? Can you please explain like what, for everyone's knowledge?
Yes, Counselor. Tomas Serrano Mishler, I'm the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. And you are correct, we're trying to correct something that's been going on a long time on that particular piece of property. I was just reviewing the conservation easement that is held by Jefferson County. And it's, it's quite clear what it does and does not allow, and it's specific to passive recreation and very much about preserving the Shirk Grass Prairie that is found on that site and the, the natural environment. So it, I think that based on the current agreement that is in place and held by Jefferson County, we need to make some change. Either we need to ask them to change that conservation easement, or we need to change the land use on that site.
Mayor, can I ask for a point of order? If it's on the agenda, shouldn't we, so that we all can participate in the conversation? If we have questions on a topic that's on the agenda, shouldn't it be handled during the agenda?
I was just waiting for Tomas to finish, and then I was going to ask Counselor Azadi. We were on City Manager's Report. We have not gotten to City Council comments yet. And your comments tend to be under the dog park, so we need to discuss it when we get to the dog park.
I was discussing it based off of the comments that we had. We've done this every two weeks. We do this every time.
We've had comments, but those should be under the topic that, where we're going to be voting. If you have questions that anybody asked about that isn't on the agenda tonight, ask those questions. But first of all, and I'm sorry to, I had asked if we had anything else under City Manager's Report, and these things don't necessarily go under his report.
Okay.
Do you have any questions that came up from people's comments that isn't on the agenda that you want answered?
Well, I think everyone's comments tonight were based off of the agenda item that we have.
Okay. Thank you. I was just waiting for a break. Anything else under City Manager's Report? I don't see anyone. That brings us to City Council Comments. Anyone? Mayor Protem?
I did have one question as a, just a follow-up, Anna. Now I'm like in the point of order, where do we ask questions that did come up for us? The question I have is around the roadway closures and just notifications around the Uplands Project. And I think if we could just get an understanding of who's responsible for it or how we can facilitate better communication if it's mostly up to the developer to do that. And I know we have our quarterly updates, but just curious to know just staff's approach there and your, and your thoughts on what we can do.
Yeah, absolutely. So the road closures are a responsibility of the developer, but that's done in coordination certainly with the city, specifically our transportation team. And I was unaware that we didn't have detour signs out there, so that's something I took a note of that we need to go back and get right. And so we'll start working that first thing in the morning and make sure that that gets right. But, you know, I agree with the Speaker, you know, that's confusing. It shouldn't be that way. There should be some flyers, signs posted, et cetera. And so we got some work to do there. But, you know, typically it's the developer who's going to put those signs out, but only after consultation with the city. So we missed something. So got some work to do.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came out and spoke to us tonight. I want to give a big shout-out. I know that the City Manager mentioned it, and we mentioned it in the pre-meeting. But if you didn't get to participate in our July 4th celebration, our staff did a fantastic job. So thank you to all the Parks and Rec staff, all the police and fire staff who make that a good, safe event. And more than anything, those of you who come out and participate and allow us to share that with the community and celebrate our nation. Couple other quick things first. Policy in Pilsner, which is my monthly town hall, is next week on the 18th. And so we meet at CoCoPelly at 6:30, and you can, we just kind of hang out and have beer. I know that there's some people here that have participated in that. It's a good opportunity to meet some of your neighbors, speak with me about any different particular subject that's coming up. I would invite Mr. Jurgensen, if he wants to come and discuss my ask of the Council around firearms, that he does that. And there certainly has been a fair amount of misrepresentation about what I've asked. And so that's going to come back on the 22nd, so I don't want, want to get too into it. However, the state law, which is SB 24-131, I would encourage folks to go read it. It gives a provision so that local governments can enact their own ordinance. And basically what that bill does is it keeps folks at schools, colleges, from being able to exercise a CCW on top of anybody else. It also does it for places where people are making law, whether that's locally or at the State House. And so I don't believe that Parks and Rec get into that. I've asked for an opinion on that from our attorneys, but there was no, there is no specific ask about what our ordinance may look like. The ask is, would the City Council like our staff to make an ordinance that makes sense for the city of Westminster? Because that is what our state-level local, our legislators allowed us to be able to do. The other thing I want to quickly say is, you know, I, I have a lot of different jobs. I'm an IT professional. I've taught at Red Rocks Community College for about a decade now, and I've been through a variety of different active shooter trainings. And it's unfortunate that we have to do such things, but in our society we do. One of the things that they teach you in all of these things, depending on what side of active shooter training you're in, is run, hide, fight. Before I got into this role or decided I was going to be a public servant, the first thing I did was I was a PTA president at elementary. During that time, my daughter's friend, Jessica Ridgeway, was murdered. And I made a decision that I wanted to do something to better our community. It was after that I decided to do church security, which I did for several years. And the, the charge of church security was basically keep the people who went to church safe. And the biggest thing was to defend the children of the church until every last person was gone or the police showed up or the threat was extinguished. So I do take some exception to this being somehow about children's safety. We really, as a society, need to step back and realize, we all, all good people, all law-abiding people, want our kids to be safe. The question is, in an unsafe world, how do you do that? It is said that the only thing necessary for evil to triumph is for good people to do nothing. I made that decision a long time ago. I was not going to be one of those people. That's why I spent seven years training, doing church security. That's why I decided I was going to take this role when the opportunity looked like I could get into a role like this to make the community a better place. So again, I'm not proposing what the city of Westminster necessarily should do. I'm saying I think it makes sense that we look at our local government. There are people who come here that may be under domestic violence threat, that have decided to go get a CCW. There may be retired police officers like my father, who did 30 years in Denver, 14 of those, as a homicide detective, who does not feel safe leaving his home for obvious reasons without a firearm. That law makes it so folks like that can't come here and exercise their government. This is their government. So I think it's a fair question for us to ask. So I will belabor it no more. There will be a full conversation about it next week, or not next week, two weeks from today, when we have that discussion. But I would welcome anyone who wants to have an actual conversation with me about it and propose ways that we could work to have something better that works for the city of Westminster. I'm, I'm all ears, because to me it's about having safety for myself coming and going, safety for other folks coming and going, because there's a lot of bad people out in the world, and keeping good people from being able to protect themselves does not make good, good sense to me. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I know it's been a long meeting so far and a long time coming as far as the dog park. So I'm excited to continue our meeting.
Counselor Ireland?
Thank you for all you coming and educating me with some things I don't know about what's going on with this amendment 30, 20, I mean 23. And also, we talked a lot of, we talked somewhat about weeds, and I have brought that attention to the City Manager, too. We have weeds from south to north, apparently, because Dino's talking about weeds. We have weeds from south to north, apparently, because Dino's talking about weeds, I've been talking about weeds, and I'm in the north. They're about five feet tall in the foster property now. I don't know who's responsible for cutting weeds, but the property owners should be responsible, and I hope that we can make our city looking better, because all the fireworks going off in the sky landing on those weeds does not make me sleep well at night. So I, hopefully, we can get the weeds under control in our city, and I thank you for all coming out. Thanks.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add, the woman who spoke about rocky flats, that's an important history that we need to continue to remind ourselves, and that's why I've continuously asked a council to back out of that project, because there are thousands of pounds of plutonium under that ground. This is not a joke. Plutonium is hazardous to the environment, hazardous to your health, and there, it's uncleaned. This only makes us more in danger, so wanted to thank her for giving some of that history. A lot of folks, I actually spoke to someone, I forget when this was, like a month ago, and I said, hey, you know, they asked me about the bridge that was being built, and I said, yeah, the plutonium is bad news, and she said, why? So we shouldn't take for granted, you know, she was older than me. We shouldn't take for granted that people understand why things are bad and why things are good. Sometimes it's helpful to learn the history, do the research, look up plutonium, you'll see how bad it is. It can cause cancer, it can cause several health risks, it hurts the environment, a lot of bad things. So thank you for bringing that history up, and we should continue to educate folks on that. And related to the gun discussion in two weeks, the state bill basically says we shouldn't allow concealed carry weapons in here and public spaces. I think that is fair, because I trust our police officers. By the way, staff agrees with this bill, with the current version. They did not agree with the early version, but our police officers and our staff want us to trust in them that they can protect us, not ourselves. Just wanted to say that.
See no one else? That brings us to the consent agenda. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda items 8A through 8E.
Mayor Protam?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move, to approve items 8A through E. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Narmela?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Counselors' Bill number 21. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill number 22 on first reading, authorizing the issuance of tax, did I skip one? 21, sorry. Move to pass Counselor Bill number 21 on first reading, amending Title III of the Westminster Municipal Code, updating departments in the city and changing terminology throughout the rest of the code.
Counselor Carmelia?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill number 21. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Narmela?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Counselors' Bill number 22. Oh, sorry, Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill number 22 on first reading, authorizing the issuance of tax-exempt utility enterprise revenue bonds, Series 2024, in par amount not to exceed $210 million for construction of a new drinking water facility and related bond cost of issuance expenses.
Mayor Protam?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill number 22. Is there any further discussion? Oh. Mayor Protam?
I just have a question related to, I think one of the public comments was just on the question around the diversification of how we are funding these large projects, and wondering if staff could comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. My name's Larry Dorr, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. The question from earlier related to three activities, capital projects in Westminster. One, related to the replacement municipal court facility that's currently underway, that council has authorized the issuance of certificates of participation. The city is engaged with many partners to make that project happen in Westminster. Before you tonight is replacement water treatment facility, and then earlier this year, our fire chief presented information about the need to add fire stations to Westminster to respond to calls for service in a timely manner, along with the aging condition of current fire facilities, and each of those has a separate function for our city, and the council will need to evaluate the necessity of each of those as they are presented. It's just very, it would be very challenging for the city team to accomplish all of those activities in sort of one fell swoop, and of course, the utility is designated as an enterprise, and so the rate payers finance all of the infrastructure and operations related to the water and wastewater utilities, so it would have to be a segmented capital projects in any event. And then finally, related to the fire, capital needs and personnel needs, there's no money within the city's current budget to finance those activities, so any change there and would require, you know, a change in tax rates or some other funding mechanism to make all of that possible. So there isn't a holistic approach or one solution to all of that that I can imagine that can be handled, but fortunately, an ongoing conversation can occur, and council will be informed of options to make all of those things happen for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ireland?
So I will not be voting for this amendment 22, I mean, not amendment, sorry, Counselors' Bill 22. The drinking water plant, there was other alternatives, and this is way too expensive for my, for the citizens of our city. It's not going to help our water rates at all, it's going to make it very expensive. Ozination, they want to add 20 million for. We have two other plants that do not have that, so just because one plant does, is not going to make that your drinking water that much different when it mixes with two other plants. So spending another 20 million for that is ridiculous in my eyes, so I will not be voting for number 22, just to let you know. Thanks.
Anyone else? I won't be voting for it, just because I don't agree with the 30 years. I understand why you did it so that it isn't so expensive, but in my 10 years of working in the bond business, that is just so long with what we need and what we're going to, we've already got one sitting there that's going on, however old it is, and this one is going to be 30 years old when we're looking at other things. I just can't do it, so roll call, oh, sorry. Counselor Demott?
That's okay. I'm sorry, I didn't, you were quicker to your button than me. I am also not going to be voting for this, and the reason I'm not going to be voting for this is, it's been a substantial conversation around 4.5%, and I understand our model, and I understand that that is the, you know, the long-term model is 4.5%, but that was always meant to be a ceiling to me. I mean, we've had a lot of conversation around it and a lot of, you know, ways that we could do that, but to date, we haven't, and it's been nothing but talk. This has been a substantial issue for me as far as water rates. I understand the need for the plant, I appreciate all that staff has done to get us to this point of something that's more workable than what we had before, but until I see that we actually are going to put some weight behind not doing the ceiling increase, I too can't, I just can't vote yes for it, so I will be a no vote.
Counselor Carmelia?
Well, I will just follow up for FYI for those in attendance. I will be voting for this, and I want to agree with Counselor Demott on, it's a shame that we are hitting that 4.5% that I heard suggested as the absolute cap. I think that we are trying to keep it under, and I want to ensure that our council is doing, or our city staff is doing everything possible to try to keep it under that, because I understand that it's painful. However, when we looked at the other options, when we looked at the 40-year option, the interest rates got incredibly high, and it's not worth it for our city to be wasting that much money, and when we looked at the 20-year option, which personally I would be behind, however, the interest rates for residents goes up to 7.5%, and folks can't afford that, especially with inflation, and so that leaves us with little option. And if we want clean water, and if we want a plan for the next 100 years, which updating the current plan does not provide us for, then this is our only option. And so unless we want to roll the costs down the road for future councils to take care of and put our city in risk or any type of health risk, then we have to take action now, and that means taking on the burden today.
Counselor Ireland?
I already talked.
Oh, you want to turn your microphone off? Counselor, Mayor Protam?
I did also want to emphasize that we did go through this in pretty great depth with staff when they presented on our options for the different bonding periods, and I know that all of us did want to see, you know, less increases in terms of the magnitude on an annual basis. I just, I believe that there is an opportunity over time to be able to look at restructuring the deal if the interest rates should go down significantly for the bond, or is that something that I'm?
Thank you. Yes, staff continues to monitor all of the outstanding borrowings of the city. We always take advantage of lower interest rates. In fact, any of the issues of this size for our community, we've always refinanced at lower interest rates, and hopefully that will present itself in decreased changes of water rates in the future, and we'll continue to focus on the operations and capital programming of our utility as we prepare to present water rate changes for 2025 to City Council.
Thank you. And I would just note, too, that I think we're all interested in, you know, trying to minimize financial impact to residents, and, you know, that it will be a continued conversation and effort by staff and by council, so.
Counselor Azadi?
And just to add on there to everything Counselor Carmelia said and Mayor Protam Narmela said, in addition to everything they said, it's also critical to do this now, because cost of everything is going up every day that we have spent looking at this, reanalyzing this, and like MPT said, she said, we all want, we all would have liked a different financial plan, but if we spend another year, by the way, it's been two years, reanalyzing this, if we spend another year hoping and praying for a lower anything, we're going to end up with a much more expensive project. It's already more expensive now, a lot more expensive now, because of the increase in the cost of supply, in the cost of labor, in materials, in all those things. Those things matter, and you see the economy right now is only going to get much more expensive with each passing day. We, like a home mortgage that you have, right? Nothing is set in stone. As the economy shifts and changes, we will shift and change to make sure we bring the lowest possible cost to the residents, but like Counselor Narmela said, if we want clean water, we need to do this now.
Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
No.
Counselor Narmela?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demott?
No.
The motion passes on a 4-3 vote. That brings us to item B2.
I get to go through them, right?
Counselor Demott?
Move to authorize the City Manager to execute an agreement for bond council services with Butler Snow LLP for a fee not to exceed $50,000, and with Cootac Rock LLP for a fee not to exceed $55,000 in connection with the anticipated issuance of tax-exempt utility enterprise revenue bonds.
Mayor Protam?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item B2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Narmela?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
No.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-2 vote. That brings us to item B3. Counselor Demott?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 14 permitting reimbursement for costs incurred for capital expenses for the proceeds of tax-exempt utility enterprise revenue bonds, Series 2024.
Mayor Protam?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item B3, Resolution 14. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, Counselor Carmelia?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I brought this up in our pre-meeting, but I wanted to bring it up for those in the, in attendance as well, as we discussed this, and I was hoping for a further explanation from Mr. Dorr as to why we are giving an overall, how did I put it? We're approving this for 2024, but this will come back around in 2025, and we're doing it ahead of time to make sure that we cap expenses where they are.
Thank you. Larry Dorr, Deputy City Manager and CFO, once again. What this resolution does is allow for the city to designate any costs that have occurred to date to be reimbursed from the proceeds of the utility revenue bonds, to the extent that it's advantageous to prepay for costs that may occur tomorrow, next week, or that have occurred in the last six to 12 months from those bond proceeds, should it be to the advantage of the city and its utility. Additionally, a question in pre-meeting related to the city's invitation for bid processes and so forth, and to the extent that the city enters into multi-year contracts based on the responses to requests for bids, those have to be renewed each year, but the pricing and terms and conditions of the various bid proposals are sort of locked in for that period of a given contract. So any of those are basic conventions that our city has undertaken many times in the past, like many of our other neighbor cities, and are just some real basic business activities that allow for lowest costs and highest degree of service and value for the projects. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think it's good for our residents to hear how hard we are working to try to keep costs down.
That brings us, or roll call, please. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Narmela?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Ha?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-2 vote. That brings us to Counselors' Bill number 23. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill number 23 on first reading, adding a new section 13-1-17 to Westminster Municipal Code, establishing special regulations for Westminster Hills open space.
Mayor Protam?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill number 23. Let the discussion begin. Counselor Ha?
Yes. I would like some clarification, so on the proposed Bill 23, Section 2C, it says, "All uses and activities authorized pursuant to Section 1353 of this code are allowed within the who's dog off-leash and natural area, provided, however, that the who's dog off-leash and natural area is an off-leash dog exercise area as identified in subsection B of Section 1353, is expressly authorized, notwithstanding any limitations set forth in such subsection B or elsewhere within this code." And then when you go to the municipal code of 1353B, it says, "Additional activities that may be allowed on certain open space property or portions thereof, after the City Manager determines such activities will not have a detrimental effect on the natural qualities for which the open space was originally acquired, including fishing, biking, horseback riding, boating, and the..." riding, boating, and the development of off-leash dog exercise areas, restrooms, trailhead parking lots, and limited structures that enhance the passive recreational experiences. Limited structures may include ponds or other, or other water bodies designed to enhance wildlife habitat, benches, fishing piers, signs, and educational displays." So my question is, it has been said multiple times, and, and I just want to be clear, I'm not worried about manager Freitag. I'm worried that any city manager at any point could say, there's a reason to, to, to get rid of this dog park. And I think that's a lot of power for one person to have. And my, I'm, sorry, I lost my train of thought. It has been said multiple times that the city manager isn't the one, that it's council. But if you could explain to me, in this proposed bill, A2C, and how that works with our municipal code 1353B, how that is not giving any, because this is my, my, my fear. We had an ERO report. And in that ERO report, and it is true that the ERO report was changed. I have seen the original ERO report, which doesn't mention dogs. And then somebody on staff asked, and I've been told that this is standard procedure, we can agree or disagree. At the end of the day, it was asked that there be information about dogs be included in the ERO report because this staff member wanted to shrink the dog park to thirty-some acres. So the ERO report was changed, and that, that is a fact. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, talk about anything else, other than the fact is, we had an ERO report, it was asked to be changed, and it was changed. So some other city manager at some point, who wasn't around when this was happening, could say, well, we have an ERO report that says it's detrimental, so we're just gonna get rid of the dog park. And I just think that's way too much power for one person to have, and we know that it was changed. And, and so we need to make sure, I would like to make sure that this, what happens in these situations, is on council, because there's seven of us on council. Right? And so it may, it, it, I don't have, that, that's way more power than, you know, for, you know. So I, can you just explain to me, could somebody please explain to me how our A2C in this proposed bill and 1353B in our municipal code isn't giving the city manager that power?
Attorney Frankel?
Thank you, Counselor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. So I think it's important to, to understand, 1317, the new paragraph that's here for your consideration tonight, would act as a city council designation of this land as an off-leash dog area. And that designation takes precedence over the existing code language elsewhere. So when you look down to, as Counselor Azadi asked earlier, paragraph 2A, the, to the extent that 1316 and 1317 are already on the books, this designation overrides anything that's inconsistent with regard to the ability of staff to unilaterally undo a dog park designation. So this dog park designation is council's designation, and only city council can change it. So I would say the same thing as to paragraph C, to your question, how does 1353 operate? Today, 1353 is on the books. And 1353 allowed for the creation of a dog park, but there were strings attached with regard to the impact on the land. This designation overrides that and explicitly calls out that, and I'll point you to the final sentence of paragraph C, is expressly authorized, notwithstanding any limitations set forth in such subsection B or elsewhere of this code. So really, the intent here is that the new paragraph is a dog park that is expressly authorized by city council and won't be subject to unilateral changes by staff. So that, that language is in the draft here for your consideration, and happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Okay, thank you for explaining that to me. So in the pre-meeting, it was brought up about the open space purchase of, from the Sisters of the New Covenant property. In, in the pre-meeting, it was said that they haven't been talked to. Okay, so my question is, we don't know if it would be allowed or not, because we didn't ask, correct?
And we do know, the Sisters have sold their interest in this property. We purchased it with support from, well, it was a complicated deal, but there was a lot of partners involved in putting all this together, Trust for Public Land, the Jefferson County, and ourselves. And part of the agreement to purchase this 25.49 acres was that Jefferson County would hold a conservation easement on this property. Conservation easement, I was just reading it, it's very, very detailed and extensive on what we can and cannot do on that property. And I think that anyone reading that document will infer that off-leash dog walking is not permitted within the constraints of this conservation easement.
So I was looking at the map, the current map of the trails in currently what is considered the dog park, and a trail goes right through there. So it had, we, we have, we've had a trail there for off-leash dogs. Were they, were they aware that that trail existed through that portion of land?
I don't know if Jefferson County is aware or not. I don't know.
The, it would have been nice to have these things clarified before they were up for a vote. So if, if we can't use that property, what is going to happen to that trail that is going through that property? How is that trail going to be changed, or what is, what will happen to that trail? Because it's part of a larger loop.
That's a great question, and really it relates to the importance of the master planning process that we want to go through. And of course, we want to work with the community, the folks that use that site, to help us realign those trails. Realigning the trails and closing unnecessary trails is a very important part of managing this site effectively, so that we are able to really create better walking experiences for the, the dog owners and the other people visiting that site. So there's multiple purposes to creating a better trail system than the kind of crazy spaghetti that we have out there right now.
So would that loop go away?
Probably. But I would say we'll have to see what the master plan calls for. And I have said that I'll speak with Jefferson County and see if they're willing to waive the conservation easement for this property. So there's, I guess, the exploration process or the discovery process of doing the master plan will help us to really define that clearly.
So if Jefferson County said that it was okay to keep that trail there, then would we then have to vote on an amendment to include that in the dog park?
I don't know. I'd have to ask City Attorney on that one.
I'm just rereading our ordinance draft here. Right now, the paragraph that addresses the Sisters' land says, "That land, basically identified in the attachments, is subject to a conservation easement, so it cannot therefore be made as part of an off-leash dog area." I think that if Jefferson County, after discussion, agreed that a trail could cut through the corner of that land, and that corner land was no longer subject to a conservation easement, that could be a solution. We'd have to talk to them, but I think it's important that council understand that the conservation easement is in effect today, and that's why staff is recommending the ordinance as it reads today. But we're happy to, I think, talk to Jefferson County and explore that corner and see if the trail, is there a way to make that remain open?
Correct. Yeah.
And if not, is there any way that we can preserve that trail just by moving it out of that corner, since it just cuts through that? Because losing that loop, some people want to take a longer route and some people want to take shorter routes. And so it's nice having smaller loops and larger loops depending on what the, you know, the people who are recreating there would like to choose to do. And so I think losing that loop would not be good. And so if, if, if Jefferson County wants to allow that, that would be great, but if they don't, then I still think it's important that we connect that loop outside of that area, so that way that's still available to folks.
I agree that a variety of lengths of looped trails is really important out there. I agree.
Okay, those were the two things that I, I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
So there's some ambiguous stuff still going on. So I will not be able to vote for this until we have answers to that portion owned by, or given to us by Sisters of the New Covenant. I think the homework should have been done before this meeting. And apparently, we have dog guardians that can do the homework before this meeting, and I would hope our employees could do the same. I will not be voting this until there's a amendment to include it, and also amendment to make sure the city council gets the final say on what happens to that space.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a few questions on the list of the fiscal impacts that one of the commenters had. So related to number one, on the 120,000 to 150,000 for area-specific management plan, I want to take a step back, actually, to, from all of these. What we're voting on tonight, and Director, please correct me if I'm wrong, or City Manager, what we're voting on tonight is only related to the amendment to our municipal code that establishes specific and unique regulations of this space as a off-leash dog park. We are not voting on a management plan. Repeat, this is not related to the management plan. This is about ensuring we keep the park same size, which is what we wanted, okay? This is not about a management plan. We should not co-mingle the details of that very complex discussion, future discussion, that we will have with tonight's vote, which is very important, this vote. We will get to that. We will get to the fiscal impacts, we'll get to how many people, how many FTEs, we'll get to all of that. The parking, you know, I'm very interested in the parking particularly, but we need to focus on the fact that tonight's plan, so am I wrong, Director? Just, just to be clear.
Yeah, Counselor, we're voting on the land management plan as outlined in the ordinance language, not a, when we say land management, I think we use those terms, you know, and they do get co-mingled and it's confusing. But this is designating Westminster Hills open space dog, off-leash dog, and natural area, very, very similarly to how we manage Stanley Lake. It's got its own set of rules, and we're going to do the same thing with these 440 acres as outlined currently. But this is not about, you know, as you said, you were very correct, this is not about, you know, making decisions about positions, it's not about making decisions about, you know, where the fences go and where the trails go. That all comes next. We, we've got to define tonight, as we outlined in our discussion on June 3rd, what's the size of the area and the boundaries and limits that we're talking about. And this ordinance does that. Then we can move forward. But until you do that, you're just kind of, if you will, kind of throwing, you know, things into the wind, because you haven't defined the area. We've got to define the area from a, a size and a space, limits, boundaries, if you will. So this is not about all the other stuff that people keep talking about, number of employees, trails, where the fences go, where the signage goes, number of garbage cans, all that kind of stuff.
And, and just to be even more crystal clear, the actual ordinance that we're voting on tonight retains the open space designation and addresses the unique attributes of this space, so the off-leash dog park piece. We are retaining, I'm going to repeat that one, we are retaining the open space designation of this area. It accomplishes many objectives from many different groups, I believe, because it keeps the off-leash dog park activity, it talks to the ecological restoration efforts, it enables those efforts to actually happen, to start maintaining this properly, and it allows for these recreational uses. It's a good plan. I think, Tomas, we've beat you up, we've beaten you up a lot. I have, personally at least, metaphorically, of course. And I think in this case, for what's being proposed tonight, we need to give some thanks to staff, that this is a good plan. It's what a lot of people wanted, and again, we should not co-mingle a lot of other things that are not for tonight with what this is proposing, which is to keep the existing size of the dog park, and accomplishing these other two objectives on ecological restoration and the recreational activity. So I wanted to say that, but to go back to the fiscal impact list, I actually love this list, these questions. I would love to ask these when the appropriate. So, City Manager, can you also clarify for everyone? We will be getting the management plan, council. Correct?
As we develop that, yes, but I mean, I don't, I can't pull it off the shelf. We have the 2014 plan, which is a pretty good start, but there are some realities that we're going to have to look at in much more greater detail.
Okay. Thank you.
I know, Attorney Frankel, you had your light on. Did you have something to share?
I think the question was answered, but I was just wanting to also indicate that from my office's perspective, this is a designation of the land. This is a designation of the land. It is not action on a management plan, and yes, it is retaining open space designation.
Mayor Protem?
So for me, I have significant pause over voting for this. I understand it is an open space designation, but the attribution of dog park, you know, or off-leash dog park for the entire area, doesn't resonate with what I've heard. I think that staff has given us input, we have had a lot of outside expertise provide input, and we certainly have verified that this is a great social location and destination for our community. I was hoping that this process would allow for some management of the property that would be able to retain that would be able to retain more of this area as, or some of this area even, as open space, and to allow for the significant, and still the largest in the state, dog park, off-leash dog area to exist, and for us to be able to still maintain this area as the gem that it is for dog owners. So, for me, the, just to verify, I mean, we have this, if we designate this site as the natural off-leash dog area, there's no ability to go back and reduce the size of the off-leash dog area unless we actually redesignate it something different or update this portion of the code.
It'd be a city council decision.
To do so. I think, you know, for me, I, you know, somebody said tonight that they're a numbers person. I am too. You know, we have some statistical surveys that have provided us with data, but not specifically to this site. We have non-statistically relevant surveys that have provided us with some input from the community. And for me, you know, if I were to support our next move, I'd honestly want to have a statistical survey specific to this site. I know it's called out for potentially as something that could happen as part of the management plan, but I would want to have that information before making such a leap into redesignating the site. I would want to hear from the entire community. Other cities actually require a vote of all of the residents if an open space is to be changed to a different use. And, you know, I'd be open to us doing that as well, if, you know, for this site. But at minimum, a statistically relevant survey that would give us a data point where we could all get behind. And, you know, because we have so much coming at us. I think it's very difficult, as the body's sitting up here, we get a lot of input. And, you know, we've emotionally, I think, all gone up and down over this site, and we really do want to hear the community and serve the community. But the community is very diverse. We've all had conversations with folks that go both ways. They're either, you know, dog, you know, part of the off-leash dog area and have the confidence to go there and the pets that can handle it, or they are concerned about it, and they want to experience their open space in a different way. So, you know, I, as part of this, you know, those are the next steps that I would propose instead of moving forward with this particular ordinance. I'd rather see us at least take a pause and get the data that we need to have more confidence in our next move. And, yeah, personally, I'd like to see more conservation easements on our open space or just a better understanding of how we can retain our open space over time. It can be moved around, you know, it can be, it's not as secure without the conservation easement. So, that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Counselor Camelia?
Thank you so much. I have several questions and then some few suggestions as well. It said in the proposal that this was recommended. Could, City Manager, could you tell us who exactly on our staff or what department recommended this plan?
Yeah, Mr. Herrera-Michler, I'll let you come speak to that. My understanding, no one recommended it to me directly, was this was a collaborative effort between our Parks, Rec and Library team and our City Attorneys team, taking into account the direction that the council provided on June 3rd during study session, which was, we want a regional park. At that time, we wanted it 470 acres. We don't want to move parking off of the northeast corner on Sims. We want to, you know, continue conversations with the owners of the canal, and we were going to not touch the 600 acres, thereabouts, on the extreme west side of the Greater Westminster Hills Open Space. So, we're, this is a solution set proposed by staff based upon council direction on June 3rd, but a collaborative effort, and frankly, I'm impressed with this solution set. I like it personally and professionally. But, you know, Mr. Herrera-Michler, did I misspeak anything, or is that on point? So, he says it's on point.
Thank you. I do have a question for our Director, though. With, hello. With this proposal, do we expect that this is a reasonable way to protect the land itself? What are our expectations for success?
Well, I think based on the research that we have been learning is, the impact of off-leash dogs is approximately 250 feet on each side of a trail, so about 500 feet. And because we have so many unofficial trails out there, combined with the official trails, we have about 55 acres of habitat available right now out of the 440. I believe that with a really good area-specific master plan, we will be able to increase that amount of habitat available to wildlife. I don't know how much. We won't know until we actually do the plan and the layout of the actual trail system. But once we have that in place, I believe that we'll see that 55 acres increase.
Thank you. And then, as far as the costs that were presented, it looks like it's going to take a couple million over the next several years that we are hoping to invest in the area. That cost, I believe, is the same as that was the one that was presented to us on June 3rd when we were proposing to remove the off-leash dogs, and it looks like it's the same. So does the cost take in the additional cost of restoration when we allow for off-leash dogs?
Those cost estimates are based on the 2014 Open Space Stewardship Plan. So there's two things to take into account. One is that everything is much more expensive, as Counselor Azadi was mentioning. So as time goes on, those costs will increase. And then there's also the unknown factor of kind of how much impact will off-leash dogs have on the landscape, and then how can we mitigate? Or how much should we mitigate based on the cost? So there's going to be a real balancing act, and that's another part of the importance of doing this area-specific master plan, is to really dig in and understand clearly where we make the investments, where they're going to have the best payoff for the wildlife and for the people enjoying that place.
Okay, so the cost is going to depend, is what I hear?
Correct.
I didn't read it in the proposal, but correct me if I'm wrong. Is there any consequence to the city if the land is not restored?
Well, that's a multifaceted question. You know, I think that people have observed that there's lots of plants growing out on the landscape out there. And, you know, I'm a plants geek, and plants are not all created equal. I believe that there's huge value to preserving remnants of the original ecology that existed here prior to settlement, and that it's important to have habitat for pollinators. It's important to have those plants that were here originally, because that's part of our heritage. It's part of what makes Westminster so special. So does it matter that a lot of the plants out there are scotia, which turns into tumbleweeds? I think it does. I think it's awful when those tumbleweeds dry up and they all blow into countryside. That's not great. So, yeah, there's consequences. I think that it's really, one of my biggest responsibilities as the Director of Parks here is to make sure that we're ecologically taking care of these lands that are entrusted to us, not just for our enjoyment, but for future generations.
And so what I hear are consequences to our ecology, not necessarily to the city, unless that there's a reverter clause, such as we're talking about for the 30 acres to JFCO.
Yeah, that's correct. The conservation easement, well, I can let City Attorney speak to how stringent that particular conservation easement is.
I'm trying to jump to my piece. I'll try to speak to that conservation easement real quick. The proposal says, as a result of the conservation easement and the original agreement, it is recommended to be adjusted to 440 acres. I just want folks to know what this means, is that this section of approximately 30 acres must remain designated in its original form as open space, as it's currently designated, because it was protected when it was created as an open space. And so I just, what that means to me is, under the current designation of this land, those 30 acres with the money that it was purchased from JFCO are not allowed to be used in the current form that they're being used for off-leash dogs. And so that must be protected, because legally, it was put into the agreement at the time to protect that land for posterity. And so that's not an option for us, right, to use that as off-leash, which we already know. So we're not considering the rest, so we're not considering that portion. But the reason we are considering the rest of this land is because we, as a city, did not, nor did the folks that we purchased the rest of the land from, put an easement clause into the rest of the land, meaning that we are allowed to do with the rest of the land, even though we were told that we were to be stewards of that land. Now, we can change, because there's no, I'm sorry, I'm losing train of thought here. Because there's no conservation easement on it, we can change that designation. So, I want to pause there really quick and just ask our attorney, can you define for everybody what the conservation easement means in general?
Thanks. I'll ask Greg Graham to come on up, as Mr. Graham is most familiar with this issue. But I would just add that the land, even now that is subject to this Council's bill to redesignate, to allow the dog park, does have its own restrictions. They're just a little more broadly worded. I believe they allow for parks and open space uses. The restriction that I'm aware of on the Sisters' property is a restriction on active uses versus conservation. So, Mr. Graham?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, is this on? Okay. Counsel, thank you. So the conservation easement, as Director Michler Herrera identified, is actually held by Jefferson County. The Sisters didn't actually have anything to do with that. It was a condition of funding that the city used to acquire that property, that conservation easement be placed on it and held by another entity. In this case, it was Jefferson County. The conservation easement discusses the nature of plant life and habitat and animals that you're likely to see, that the purpose of, you know, that was for protecting. That's why there was a conservation easement on it. It allows use, but it doesn't allow use, and this is typical with most conservation easements, it doesn't allow use that is contrary to the conservation values of that conservation easement. And so typically, when you do a conservation easement, the holder of that conservation easement gets to decide whether or not a particular use is in violation of the conservation values of that particular easement. And so in that, in this case, that would be Jefferson County, right? The way it's worded, it really is looking at passive use. It's looking at, well, primarily conservation as a use. I don't know if that answers the question, if you want me to go farther on that.
That does answer a question. Thank you. And to our knowledge, do we have conservation easements as a city on any of our open spaces from the city's perspective?
We have some conservation easements on other city properties. I couldn't tell you which, other than the Schoenberg Farm property. I know that one, that is a conservation easement for the purpose of historic preservation. That's a similar situation where you can't make use of the property in a way that is contrary to the conservation values set forth in the easement. And once again, that's, you know, decided by whoever holds that easement. So, in this case, with the, well, Adams County, I don't know when they started going to conservation easements, but at some point, they tied their open space dollars to conservation easements. So, if you acquire a property, even in part with Adams County open space dollars, Adams County requires you to put a conservation easement on it. That's not usually held by Adams County, because frankly, I don't think they want to go to the trouble of monitoring all these spaces that they're going to have, they're going to have conservation easements on. But that's basically how it works.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's everything. Okay, I'm going to go back to Mayor Protem's point that was made just a moment ago. The proposal states, within the proposal it states, "A statistically valid survey may be advisable at some point to assess the level of city resident usership and preferences to inform the plan. Any major policy issues will be brought to the city council for consideration and direction. Once completed, this will be, the plan will be reviewed with the City Manager for final direction and implementation." So this is saying that we, it suggests a statistically valid survey of the city to determine the plan. So my question is, why not now, when we're making this decision? Why not implement this survey across the city now, before we make further decisions? And so that is the direction I would like us to take, because to my knowledge, to Mayor Protem's point, the surveys that we have done so far were around this issue, but they were not statistically valid across the city. Is that correct?
Yes, I think the thing to remember is, June 3rd, the council said you wanted a regional park. You wanted something that was not only simply for our residents, but for the Denver metro region to continue to use as it has become accustomed to for the past 20-plus years. And so, you know, the council discussion came out to regional park. There was discussion, you know, is 200 right, is 300 right, you know? And the answer from the council that night was 470 acres. Now, you take the 30 acres or so off of the Sisters' property because of the conservation easements, and you come up with the 440 that's currently proposed. But, you know, I think that, based upon that council direction on June 3rd, the staff took that and, you know, came forward with a plan that designates the boundaries and some special rules for how that land is then used moving forward. And so I think to the commentary and the agenda materials is, is that, you know, now that we've, if the council approves this, if you define that, we now have, we've identified or established the playing field and the expectation for who the user group is. So, do you go out then and do a statistically valid survey to take, you know, thoughts on, you know, where fencing goes, where trails go, you know, et cetera? We certainly can do that and could do that. We could also work with partners like the Guardians, you know, and have community meetings that get to that same result. But again, the item that's on the table is, tonight is, you know, if the council still wants the regional park and you want it at 440 acres, this is the staff's best recommended way to codify that by establishing this off-leash dog and natural area.
Right, and we need to determine if that is what council needs to do. And while we've heard considerable input from the folks that have arrived here, what I do know is somehow, despite publicity, we haven't reached the whole city, because I continue to encounter folks who do not know this is happening to land that their tax dollars pay for. And so to that point, I'm going to push back and say that I definitely would like to see a statistically valid survey across the city to ensure that folks know what's happening to their open space. I'll add that I think, I think the dog park guardians already know that I support their detailed plans for the land, for the open space. I appreciate their management plan. I support that, and the trails that they've outlined, and the volunteer coordination, and the incredible level of effort that they've all taken on planning and mapping out that park, that land. And so a big thank you to them. I also know from meetings with individuals from the CAT team that even the majority of that CAT team fully expected there to be some sort of compromise on the designated size of off-leash area. And so to that point, it is my belief that we need a measure by which we can ask- And so, to that point, it is my belief that we need a measure by which we can ascertain the opinion of the entire city. Which is why a statistically valid survey that asks residents whether they would like the land to be redesignated ensures that we reach to everyone throughout the city, and then we are hearing back from them. I have still encountered folks that are highly involved in city matters that don't understand what's happening. And I do believe this would take probably about eighteen thousand dollars, so I know what I'm asking for. And considering we are debating investing millions, depending on the actions that we take tonight, I hope we can agree that this is an investment worth taking for the city and for our residents.
Is that all your questions?
I'm gonna go back to that one. It's not, though. I'm gonna take a couple more notes then, real quick. I'm gonna make a couple more asks. I just want to say that cities with best practices on land management ensure that no parks or open spaces can be redesignated without consulting the will of the people. Changes to open space must be put on a ballot. And so, I'd like to ask for two charter amendments. One, I propose that we make a charter amendment that redesignation to our open spaces, unless the city is receiving land in an equal or greater, greater amount than the allotted land being lost or exchanged, requires a ballot measure. This guarantees that our cities are aware of decisions being made with their tax-funded land, and that the ultimate decision lies within their hands, and that ensures representation. I also propose that we make a charter amendment to place conservation easements on open spaces for all city-protected land, because that land is within our stewardship. So, I know that each one of these asks should take a pause, because we should probably get some sort of feedback. But I just want to add that we really have a moral and ethical responsibility to make the best decision for those who use the land, both for our residents who pay taxes and who are unaware of the potential change to our city's land, and for our city, and for our posterity, because this is finite. I just want to say that what I read tonight for this proposal, what this does is it legally allows the city, through this specialized plan, to destroy the soil, to destroy the land, and it just makes it legal for us to do it. Where we cannot have our cake and eat it too, that's not possible. We all know that, and to pretend like we can is irresponsible and ignorant. And so, I will not let any of us make this decision while pretending like that is possible, right? And so, we need to consciously decide, are we going to protect some of the land, or are we going to say, okay, we're gonna redesignate this and legally allow it to be destroyed, which is why that thirty acres or so approximately doesn't allow off-leash, because it has that conservation easement in it, because it's not legal to do what we're doing right now. So I just want us to all be very aware of the decisions we're making. That's everything. I would like to get back to the proposal, though, the ask of doing a survey.
We are discussing this, the community has had their chance to talk to us. Councillor Demont?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Ben Franklin said, "Tell me and I forget, teach me I may remember, and involve me I may learn." I think that there's been plenty of that in this process. If you look across this room, one of the most frustrating things for me entering local government is how few people participate. Because this is where we change your life tomorrow. This impacts the things that you see when you leave your door. So, hopefully, for the, the residents, we continue to see you pass this issue. That's not really for this issue, but I'll, I'll tell you how important it really, really is. Because we could do statistical surveys, and I don't have a problem with it. We do a citizen survey biannually, and I can tell you there are still people who don't know what's going on. And the rate of return on those is, in my opinion, is dismal. And it's enough to be called statistically valid. However, I can tell you that most people probably don't open it. I mean, they don't know the things. And unfortunately, we learn more often when the city makes a misstep. And I don't think it's usually through any mal-intent or probably ever, it's just they're doing their job, they think they know what the right thing is for the community, and we end up in these kind of situations. So, the other ask that I have is for the staff side. I think there's been a lot of things in our processes that have inadvertently, I would hope, broken the trust with the community. So, we need to look at some of our processes and figure out how we do better. And I think that's just a, a human thing that we all should do. Where did we misstep? Where could we do better? Where did we do well? In an issue that's garnered this much attention, I think that we should take that kind of pause. The other thing I want to say that I would support is, in, it would be more in the changing open space. I think long-term, that makes a lot of sense for us to have some sort of out, I think purchasing it, that would be very difficult if you went through one of the processes of purchasing it. A lot of times, that happens in exact session, because we have an opportunity to buy property. That's not open space at the time. So we're fighting with, you know, the open market to buy property in order to conserve it for our community, so. But I do think that that's a reasonable thing for us to look at long-term. But in terms of what we're doing here tonight, I don't think it's perfect, but this is the first right step. I think the city manager is right when he said the majority of council said, here's what we want. And this is an effort at that. Whether or not it's perfect, I think my biggest concern has been addressed multiple times. I think the city attorney probably got sidebarred during the bathroom break by every member of council asking, or letting him know, we were gonna ask, what does this mean? So I appreciate that he and his team are ready to make sure that it's iron solid, that, you know, council is making direction, that we're saying this is off-leash dog park. And to me, why that's very, very important, is that's what it's been for, for decades. I, not to age myself, but I turned forty-five this year, and that's one of those, those years. And I think back to, I've lived in that same neighborhood, basically, my entire life. Moved away for a couple of years, not far away, up to Wheat Ridge for a couple of years, but I, my folks still live in the same home in countryside, original owners, and they're, that's the second home they've owned there, their original owners in one of the smaller homes before they built the ones that they're in now. So, I've seen the changes. And originally, for me, that wasn't natural grass. You know, there, there were cattle over there. So, things have changed over time, and I do think it's important that we, we protect the property. But I also think that when we give things to the residents, that they have enjoyed, that we've called a certain thing, we should make sure that we maintain that. Our open space, the reason that's so important to me is because it is all the things we've heard. It's how people unwind, it's the mental health, it's us connecting back to nature and getting out of the grind. Those things are important to us. So, I think that it's a hard balance, and, you know, I know that the, the director of Parks and Rec has his work cut out for him, as well as his team does. And so, I hope there's learning lessons from this. But for me, I am gonna support this tonight, not because it's perfect or everything I want, but it's the first right step to say, that is what this is, because that's been the initial fight, as far as I see it. And then there's a lot of work to do moving forward. There's a lot of budget conversation that's gonna have to happen, there's a lot of, you know, where do the paths go? There's just so much more work that this sets off, but I do think, before you have this, you can't do all that work, because we don't know what that work looks like if we don't say, here's the area. So, with that, I am gonna support it, and I hope that, you know, we have some lessons learned. I do hope that we, you know, look at how we protect this stuff moving forward. The only other last thing I would ask that we have going forward, just because we've heard it multiple times, and no, nobody in any part of our city should, A, leave your dog droppings and, and not being dealt with. So that's a bigger city issue to me. But the dog biting, it's against the law for somebody's dog to bite you. There are certainly avenues for you to go down, and you should. So I think that one of the things that we should look at with our dog parks is making sure part of our signage says, here's what to do. If, you know, you have an issue with a dog, here's the proper avenue. And then when we're looking at security of our parking lots, I do think that maybe some level of cameras or something that show who comes and goes from the dog park would make a lot of sense, because that may make that work easier if there are, you know, somebody who has offended to be able to say, I was there this time of day, and, you know, I think there's ways that we can solve that, instead of just saying, you know, I got bit, so we shouldn't, shouldn't have this. But we certainly want to hold people accountable for taking care of their dogs. And I think everybody here understands that that's a reality, whether your dog's on a leash or off a leash, that you're responsible for that animal and making sure that it doesn't hurt other dogs or people. So, that was my only other note that I had, that I asked that we look at as we go through this.
Councillor Ha?
Yes. So, I do appreciate the explanation that this is city council-designated, and so it's up to city council. So, the way it's worded, I, I had some confusion on how it was interpreted, and obviously, a lot of the folks who came to speak was confused on how that was interpreted. And there are other attorneys who think that it could be interpreted differently by a different city attorney if, you know, several years down the line, you decide you want to do something different, and we have a different, you know, city attorney. So, how can we clean up that language to make sure that it's clear to any future city attorney or future council, and to the folks that came tonight? How can we make that language a little clearer?
I, I think one edit that could be incorporated into paragraph two A would be the phrase, "which takes precedence." Right now, it just ends as, "subject to the provisions of this section thirteen-one-seventeen" period. I think adding "which takes precedence" would make it extra clear that this designation has precedence over any other use regulations that exist in the code.
How would we make that edit? What, what is the?
That phrase could be added as part of a council motion to approve councillor's bill twenty-three.
Councillor? Councillor Demont has a question.
Well, as the motion maker, I'd like to propose that we add the edit that the city manager just proposed.
Thank you. And then, one more thing. First, there was a lot of discussion around rezoning. If we rezone it, then we're giving up something that we've had the whole time, we're not rezoning it. And now, we're being told, first of all, first, we had cows destroy that land. Then we had an overpopulation of prairie dogs that destroyed that land. That land is the healthiest it's ever been since we have acquired it, and so destroying the land, absolutely, the dogs are not destroying the land, because it would not be in the shape that it is today after the cows destroyed the land, and after the prairie dogs destroyed the land. So, now that it's not overpopulated with prairie dogs, plants have been able to grow there, instead of it being barren dirt, which is what it was. And so, it is absolutely not true that this is a legal way to destroy the land, otherwise that land would already be destroyed. And anyone who has gone there, and anyone who has hiked there, and anyone who has gone further than the first two acres is aware of all the wildlife, all of the plants, and everything that has been able to grow there, now that we don't have an o, overpopulation of prairie dogs, and now that we don't have cows there. So that's just completely untrue and false, and I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Councillor Ireland?
So I have one more question about the twenty-five acres that was designated conservation. Who gave approval to put a path on it if it's supposed to be totally conservation?
I don't know whether the attorney is gonna respond to this, but I think the, the key point is, is that probably knowing sitting in this room was, was here when the city purchased this land and started using it. And so, I think the reality is, is that the city's been in violation of the conservation easement since we acquired it, whenever that was, two thousand and eleven? Yeah, thereabouts. But, you know, we've been in violation, and so this is an opportunity, you know, for the city to rectify that, resolve that, and get back in compliance with that conservation easement. But I'm not aware of anybody here that, that would have, certainly not, yeah, no.
Well, I would like to make an amendment and talk to Jefferson County to see if they would prove it as part of the open space dog park. I don't know why we had to take a path and have to remove the path and the cost of that. It's just ongoing costs and ongoing not doing your homework kind of stuff to me, so. I will be voting for it after the explanation, but I would like some amendments made.
Thank you. I, I think staff can certainly approach Jefferson County and explore ways to address the trail, but I would not recommend designating that property tonight as an open space off-leash dog area, in light of the fact that we now know about the conservation easement that the city agreed to back in two thousand and eleven. So, I think there, there are pathways forward by contacting Jefferson County, but I wouldn't recommend necessarily modifying the ordinance to redesignate those acres formerly owned by the Sisters.
I'm not asking you to do that tonight, but, but the information should have been given to us to, before tonight.
Thank you. One other procedural question, Mayor, if I might? As the motion maker has agreed to amending his motion with the second, I think Mayor Protem Nirmala agreed to that same amendment to the motion that she seconded.
Yes.
While I'm not gonna be voting for this, I do appreciate what staff has put together, and that this, I do think it's a logical approach. And I look forward to being and, having input on the management plan process, and I know you'll be working with the community with that, but, you know, hopefully, it's an inclusive process, too, but, thank you.
Councillor Camellia?
I would like to do the same. Just thank you to staff for attempting to resolve and create a compromise for a council that will not compromise, and for a city that won't compromise. And so, I think that you have tried to do what is impossible, and so unfortunately, I will definitely be voting no, but thank you for all the effort and work that it went into it.
I think I'm the only one that hasn't spoken, and I understand all sides that have been talked about up here, but we've been dealing with this since the first meeting was in November. And we got involved in March, and have been involved, it feels like, every meeting since So, where we probably missed the mark was when the survey was being put together for the community, if we wanted to survey on this question. We certainly can for next year, to just get that feel and know where people are. As far as ballot amendments, we have until the end of August, and so, if councillor wants to put that on a study session, to have a discussion, we can certainly do that, to see what the flavor of the rest of the council is. But, the only thing I have is, with us wanting regional, I think I've been one that has said, do we or don't we want regional? I'm okay with that thought for the moment, but I have heard loud and clear from staff, seven hundred and fifty thousand is too many. I don't know how we figure out how many is enough, isn't too much, but I think we have to start somewhere, and that's where we start tonight with what you all brought together. And I believe you did look differently at this, you took different lens and tried to make it, just, you, you've heard all sides of what everybody has said. And so, I don't have anything more to add to that. I just say with the regional, I'm okay leaving it for Westminster, because they're the taxpayers. If we go regional, because we don't have enough, when we know what that enough is, and we make it regional with so many others can come, and we either have them have a pay, however we're gonna work all that, so we know how many are coming, I'm okay with that. So, to me, this is a first step, and we have a ton more work to do. This is just the first step. And- And might it look different a little bit as we go on? I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, but we have to start somewhere. And we do a survey next year that we do with the community, and it may say whatever it says, but know that you're not gonna get a hundred and fifteen thousand back, you're getting three thousand back. So, is that enough? I, I don't know for us what's enough. So, I'll be voting for this with the amendment, knowing that we have a lot more to go forward with. I care about that land, and I know from when some of the folks have called me to discuss something, and they're walking in the park, I hear the meadow larks, I, I hear the different things that are nature there, and sometimes something's loud enough because of whatever they're cackling about or doing whatever, we have to wait till they're finished with their conversation, so that we can finish our conversations. So, it, it's a beautiful space, I don't think we want anything different from any of us, but we have to figure it out together. And this community, no matter which side they sit on, we really have some of the same core values for our open space, and that's where we have to start. So, with that, we have a motion with an amendment on the floor, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Nirmala?
No.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
No.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-two vote. There's cause for executive session?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Tonight's agenda includes and proposed executive session for city council, a discussion of a personnel matter, the quarterly check-in for the city manager pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code one eleven-three C one, and Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four-six-four oh-two-four F one.
I will poll the council, please give your name, and that if you're willing to go into executive session.
Obie Azadi, yes?
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Nirmala, yes.
Amber Ha, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
It is ten-twenty, and we will adjourn this meeting and meet in the other room. Oh, yeah, you have a break. Take a break.